A lot of woodships over by where you live.
I'd love some.
John, we're gonna go.
Just back and quick and get them.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order of the Bath Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, January the ninth, and it's about six oh one. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Do you get it, Alexa?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Okay, have consensus vote. Anyone object? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You unanimous? Anyone have a disclosure of conflict within?
Sorry.
No? Hearing now. General public comments. Sir, is there anything you'd like to address the planning commission about?
Absolutely will, thank you.
Oh, I didn't recognize you, Jack. Hi. Yeah, I certainly do. Thank you.
He's incognito.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, that's happened a couple times today, but I never generally wear a hat, so I think that confuses people. Well, let me see here.
It does say Clinton Transit. Does say Clinton Transit, your hat. Thank you for representing.
I try and get the word out as much as possible. So the last board meeting, the board voted to approve the general direction that the planning commission is going in four different areas. And I guess I should start by saying thank you for your hard work, the direction you are going, the things you accomplished, the things that you plan to accomplish. In developing ordinance for the ordinances for those particular four different areas that you're gonna look into. So I did state to Mr. Wright that one of the things I had concern over was the alternative types of energy ordinance that you might be working on. And it was brought to my attention on Ms. Hagerman that things aren't always gonna be the way they are now, and that things could change, and it's important for us to have one of those ordinances. So we can move forward, even though right now I feel like the political climate in developing that is a little bit rocky just because of some actually discussed in the Public Service Commission, which is a three-member panel. So I'd just take a couple minutes more if I could just to talk to you about my feelings about those particular parts of alternative energy. I'm gonna start with solar in particular. So this might make the old PPOS thing seem kind of small, but I'm not trying to ring the alarm bell. I just have some concerns about this. So if you look at solar panels, the biggest element even for their production is what's called polysilicon. And so what they use, they take, it's like a high purity of silicone that they melt down, and they compress it in wafers, then slice those wafers off, and they're made to use cells. So the biggest production right now of polysilicon, go ahead and guess in your mind, is China. And it's in Zhejiang province where the weavers are. Where they're using forced labors to get, forced labor to get this stuff done. You know, that hits me wrong. I'll just say it right now. I mean, if, like all of these things, if you really wanna know the impetus or the beginning of them, just start following the money. And so that's, I'm not a real fan of that, the honest with you, and that's why I thought we should slow walk this a little bit. And I don't really like that term. I guess that's not what I mean, but just take your time approaching it and seeing where you're gonna go with it. So I'll just look at a couple other notes and try and shorten this up a little bit. So if you wanna look at, or you think about, well, what's the big demand right now in these big solar farms? Why all of a sudden is it coming really to, seems to be overtaking its demand a little bit? And that's because China's actually done oversupplying those things. And so it's dropped the price way down, and people are trying to get in on that price mark right now. People with cash, governments with cash are trying to get on that price drop, and it's gonna outstrip the pace of, I guess, what's needed. Again, something that's just, I think, not really working to solve the problem, but to make the problem worse. So I'll leave that alone for a second and just go to EV vehicles, because I'm gonna go down the same train. So what uses the most in EV vehicle batteries? Cobalt. Where does cobalt come from?
Africa.
Well, comes from Africa, right?
Yep.
The Democratic Republic Congo.
Congo, yeah.
There's no worse child labor going on anywhere in the world right now than Democratic Republic Congo. Those people that live there live on, well, first of all, sixty-eight percent of the world's production comes out of there, and forty-eight percent of the world reserves come out, come out of DRC. They also have one of the highest grades of ore, which is three percent as opposed to zero point six percent in the whole rest of the world. That's why it's so attractive. Well, you know, it's, you would say that probably that cobalt is like the blood diamond of the EV market right now. And that's really the way I feel about it. If you've ever taken the opportunity to look at how some of those mines are run, or talked to anybody that's been over there, it's, we're at, I made a reference to PPOS. POS is in thirties of POS is where we're at right now with cobalt batteries and things like that. We're not knowledgeable at all. Now, I know there's some other development that's going on in terms of like fluorine battery, et cetera, but they're to replace lithium ion, not cobalt batteries. So I would just say once, I guess I'll finish this up quickly and say, you know, I think it's important that we take a look at it, and I appreciate that you're doing it. But I'd really take a look at what impacts it's gonna have in terms of world economy. Because I really think that the dollars that we're gonna spend on the China market is only gonna build up, not only, obviously, their economy, but the Communist Party, their military, and the things that we can't afford to have happening right now. And we're just one step in that little small cog of how we wanna advance these things. So with that, I'll leave it. I could say more, but I think you're getting the gist of it. And I think it's important that we do look at it, and thank you, Kate, for bringing that to my attention, that things aren't always gonna be the way they are, that they're gonna change just as they have in other things. But I just want you to take this into consideration as you consider an ordinance in this, to know that there is some. I think soon the world reserve will not be the greenback. It'll be the yuan, or it'll be the ruby, because India's moving much faster than both of us are in their growth. So I think it's just we have to look at kind of the world market perspective on some of this stuff. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jack. You know, I'll make a comment about the solar panels, Jack. A friend of mine used to be in the solar panel business and couldn't compete with China. Another friend of mine went to visit that plant where they're making the solar, the pucks or whatever you wanna call them. That plant has electric furnaces to melt the silicon, and they're fired by six train cars of coal every day for, to generate the electricity to make the solar panels, which I think is kind of ironic.
There's one facility in the US in Massachusetts that convert the pucks into the wafers. But there's no actual production ones in the US that make, you know, that take the polysilicon.
Right, that makes the polysilicon.
Makes the pucks those.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it's kind of an interesting twist on the economy. But it's not benefiting the US in the long run, I don't really think. Thanks for that.
If any of you.
Go ahead. You got some questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Trustee Phillips, I just wanna say I have a hundred percent respect for you. And I look forward to taking you head on head with this regard. I actually have been looking at some old research. I had an opportunity yesterday, fortuitously, to find in a recycling bin some research from nineteen seventy-eight and eighty related to the seventies oil crisis. It was research on the use of wood fuels for heating homes, and as it was an innovative approach to avoiding reliance on oils. I know that sounds a little bit asymmetrical to where the points that you're making. But some of the things that I really am interested in is doing a side-by-side comparison of fossil fuels and its impacts, along with solar and other renewable energy sources, whether that's wind or wood. And so I often see these conversations as being political, highly political, and, you know, related in, or embedded within rhetoric, and not in science and data and facts. And so as we have these conversations, and I look at my fellow commissioner and trustee, Kate, I'd love to see us having good dialogue in data on these very issues, and making decisions based on the data and facts, not on politics and rhetorics. And I'm not saying that that's what you're doing. I appreciate what you brought to us in terms of really thinking about it, because it's not what's always presented to us. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, do I, I just respond?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I wanna say I have the same feeling, Mr. Elmeridge. I've always respected you. I think you know that. We've had some.
Commissioner, Commissioner Elmeridge.
You know, we've had some pretty good conversations about things like this in the past, and I would look forward to having this conversation. I was really surprised. I thought one of the first things you were gonna say is, could I please disclose where I got my sources? Because I know you're data-driven, and I wish I'd actually wrote those down. I know it's, but it was kind of a last-minute thing, but trust me when I say I try to drop my sources, not just go whatever comes popping up on the internet.
And I trust that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else got any comments or questions? Nope? Well, let's move on then. Minutes of the December twelfth PD.
I've got some comments.
Go ahead.
Let's see here. There are a number of typos that I found, which I won't point those out, but some of the things that I would like to see. Safe routes to school in some places were, it was not in uppercase in terms of safe routes to school. It is an actual program through the federal government. Again, that's super minor. So one thing I do want specified in the minutes, this is related to the I development. I think the comment was that I wanted to see sidewalks within development. The actual comment was that we have an ordinance that's related to the Downtown Development Authority, which has not been, I, well, the, I think the authority has been removed. The downtown development area district has, is still in place. We do have an ordinance in place that does require developments of this sort to have sidewalks. So I would like to.
Development shall meet the requirements of the township ordinance.
I would like to be a little bit more specific, that the township ordinances do mandate that there will be a sidewalk on Webster Road if there's to be a development in this location.
Is that under the new business right here?
It's under the minutes, I believe. I'm not sure where it is.
It's number five.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that.
It's under that little V, George.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Ray, usually you. Nope. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
With the noted changes.
With the noted changes.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Miles, you had a communication from Woodhill Township?
Yep. Woodhill just sent over a letter. It's in the packet of their intent to conduct master planning.
Does everyone know where Woodhill is? Okay.
Some people may not. I don't know where it's at, but it says Schaftsburg on the letter, so.
Township to the east of us.
Yep.
Directly east.
Part of Shaiwasi.
Yep. So I guess they'll be going through their process, so, you know, if you're interested, and if I get more communications, obviously, I'll share them, but we'll just be paying attention to what they're doing. I'm sure they'll send out some surveys or some kind of public input or a public hearing notice at some point, and we'll try to keep everyone in the loop. Obviously, they're close to us, so there's some kind of residual impact to us.
What size are they?
They're small.
Very small, aren't they?
I would say the population of that township can't be more than, somewhere around, I could look it up, but probably around five thousand.
Yeah, I would think it's about that, probably. Lot of open space, lot of wetlands.
General law township.
General law township. It's not a chartered township. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, let's move on to old business, which is election of officers. Isn't it?
That's the last thing we got.
Oh, that's the last thing? I guess I didn't read it very well then. Sorry. Is there any old business?
No old business. I want more new business tonight.
Planning Commission introductions. Kate, you had some family business, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to not give you the opportunity to introduce yourself and meet us, so.
Oh, last, last meeting, yeah. Band concert.
Thank you, thank you.
I was just gonna introduce myself. I'm Kate Hagerman. I was appointed to the Board of Trustees in November. And when Ryan remade the assignments, I ended up here on the planning commission, so I'm happy to meet all of you and continue all this work. My regular job is high school chemistry teacher, so if you have any chemis, chemical questions, then I can probably help you out.
Where were you when I was in high school?
I also am a member of the Bath School Museum Committee, and I grew up in Bath. We moved away, far away, to the village of Weberville, and then we moved back here about ten years ago. We live on the Seskla Centennial Farm for my husband's family on Webster Road. So Eshtuth, Hagerman, Webster, those names are all.
On the top of the hill.
Associate, yeah. I'm happy to be here.
You're also a farmer.
Yeah, part-time.
Farmer market vendor.
Farmer's market vendor. We sell maple syrup that we produce at our farm, honey now a little bit as well, and a few other items.
I'll just say that they are the ones that got me into making maple syrup poorly. Not because of them, but because of my own skill sets or lack of thereof. They live Kitty Corner down by where I live, and so they are a value-added family to our community.
Great, great. Glad to have you here.
John, do you wanna, I think we've talked on the phone. I'm not trying to.
No, that's okay. Go for it.
But just because there are new people, and I know most of you know each other, but I don't think everyone knows, do you wanna just go through?
Well, yeah, we could do that. Sure, I don't have.
We got plenty of time.
Especially because the election of officers on the agenda tonight.
That's true. Ray, Sever, you wanna go introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background? Thank you.
How far back do you wanna go?
Not as far back as I can go with my.
Ray Sever, yeah. We've lived in Bath Township since when, I don't know, been over twenty years anyway. Lived where you are now for twenty years, but, so, yeah, we lived in Duitt Township before that, but emerging from Maine. My wife's actually from Nova Scotia, and siblings nearby by profession. I worked for the city of Lansing for eighteen years, and I worked for consulting firm for ten. And my last fourteen years working was with Veridian Township as Director of Public Works. And so since I retired in fifteen, I've been doing stuff with the homeowners association, also volunteering for, doing taxes with ARP, and this, that's enough.
Jason?
Jason Elmeridge, I'll start with the less important stuff and go to the most important. So professionally, I am a, I'm the Director of Assessment for the College of Social Science at Michigan State University. My education has been around youth development and assessing and evaluating the effectiveness of programs that support youth in being the best that they can be. I've worked in K-12, both at, at the intermediate school district level, working with a broad range of school districts, and now I work with MSU in a similar capacity. That's the less important. More important is I've been a part of Bath for the past fifteen or so years. I live on Clays up north on a dirt road. I have a hobby farm, two acres, where we make the most of our acreage. We have, we just slaughtered pigs, but we have ducks, chickens, goats, and every once in a while we'll try new animals. And so we try to live off the land and try to be self-sufficient, my wife and I. Been volunteering with the township in a variety of capacities, served as, in a brief period of time, as a Board of Trustee in an appointed position. It was probably the most valuable and learning experience I've ever had, also probably one of the most painful. So my heart goes out to you, Kate, and others who have been appointed to the board. However, I, the thing that I have learned throughout this process, as well as being a part of the planning commission previously, is that one of the best ways that you can contribute to society, one of the best ways you can contribute to our community is serving in this capacity. You go from rhetoric to actually making policies and decisions. And so the work that we do is some of the most important work that can be done in communities. And so it is an honor and a privilege to be in this position.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm Mark Crainer. I'm gonna say I'm probably the newest person. I've only lived in Bath Township two years. I've spent my entire career in collegiate dining and auxiliaries. I've been at thirteen different schools in my career, the last one being at George Mason University in Virginia. It was a lot of fun because I also had the card office, the bookstore, so I had a lot of different retail operations, but the card business was a lot of fun. And through that, one of my highlights of my career was bringing robot delivery to the United States. We were the first school to implement it, first city to work with, uh, city to get it on the roads, on the sidewalks, in Fairfax, Virginia. But again, I started in South Dakota, bounced around in the Midwest, and then went to the East Coast before I came here. I spent thirteen years there. I've also been a city councilman, sat on planning commissions because of that. So to your point, my parents instilled in it to all of us to be involved in the communities that we live in, to give back. So it's, I put my application in as soon as I got here, and so got appointed last September. And again, my wife is been in East Lansing her entire career. We got married thirteen years ago, and she said when we retire, we were moving back here. And she was right. I had no choice in that matter. Again, I'm a nomad, so it didn't matter where I go. She just wanted to be back here, 'cause this is, she worked thirty-two years at Michigan State in food service. Again, that's how we met, food service. I've been involved in food service at the national level with the International Food Manufacturers Association, Restaurant Association, holding positions with them on committees.
Can I just comment? I, I mean, the calculus and the logistics between, behind food service is just phenomenal. I would never, ever, ever want to go into that area. And I'll also say that some of the most prominent innovations and growth in a sector has been in food service, especially within universities and colleges. I mean, from the time that I was a student to now, it is light and day, so.
It was fun being a part of that, and again, changing those things, the calculus of putting a roast into an oven, at what temperature, for how long, what was the shrinkage rate, what was your yield rate? When you sit there, I was horrible at math. Learned real quick how to get there. But, yeah, I started at a school where I was everything, cook to, and my roommates in college would tell you that they didn't let me cook. And then I took on a career in cooking. At George Mason, we had twenty-two restaurants that I oversaw.
Wow. Lot of restaurants, lot of staff.
A lot of staff, six hundred people. We operated twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
I believe it, yeah. Yep, thank you. Mr. Cocky, Commissioner Cocky?
Oh, you're jumping over here.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump over here. I'm gonna go last.
Hi, Ray Cocky. I have lived on Park Lake since nineteen sixty-seven officially, I'll say. Graduated from Bath High School in nineteen seventy-two, and went to work immediately at Motor Wheel Corporation, who some of you may know it, some of you may not. But at one time, they were the third-largest employer in the entire Lansing area. There was the state, Osmobile, and Motor Wheel, up to almost forty-five hundred employees at one time. But anyway, I worked my way up from a fork truck driver at eighteen until I was probably about twenty-four, I think. I was there for fourteen years, and I, I ended my career there as the manager of their private truck fleet. We did all the logistics in rail, air, trucking, everything. And before that, I was a rate analyst, transportation rate analyst at Motor Wheel. And they put me in college, and I never, I got the credits, but I never put it together for a degree, so. After that, for about twenty-three years, I was a executive recruiter, a headhunter, mostly professional technical, anywhere that I could make, make the most amount of money with the least amount of work. That was why I did that, instead of doing real estate. And I have been interested in Bath my whole life, and Park Lake especially. And so I started out on the Park Lake Advisory Board. That was a long time ago. But was very proud of that, and what we could do for the lake and educate people about the lake. And from there, I went to the Parks and Rec Committee, until that was disemboweled. And then from there, I, I took a little time off and kind of wanted to be more involved in the community and be at a place where decisions are made, where you can make a difference. And that was why I put my request in, to be on this committee, this commission, excuse me. And I mirror Jason's thoughts. This is probably one of the most important and influential positions you can do for the community, is serve on the planning commission. Not to say anything against our Board of Trustees, but anyway, we're the brains behind that Board of Trustees, that's what I think. But I'm very, very glad to be here, so. And I think we should hear about Miles and Lexi as well.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
That's, that's it.
George Baker. I'm a lifer here. I'm a good old boy. Grew up on a farm north of town, Pete Farm. And I repair most of the equipment that all you guys have talked about. I'm a repair technician, chemical repair technician. I've served on several committees in the township for several years.
Oh, come on. The foremost expert in roads in township.
I served on the road committee.
Yeah, George does a great job of being our emissary for the road commission up St. John's, which is one of the reasons our roads have improved greatly in the last decade.
I'll say, I'll say the reason the roads have improved in the last decade is due to several boards allowing the financial
Yes.
ability to serve our township. That's.
I agree.
Just everybody that served on many of the boards have been in favor of supporting our roads over other things that, you know, everybody wants a piece of the pie.
Yep.
And, but the infrastructure seems to have been important, and I think it is very important. The sewer and the roads are probably two of the most important things in our township, as far as I could, I would say, but.
Thank you.
George is the model of humility in this township, and we should all. And we should all use him as our, as our poster child of modesty.
I just served like everybody else. I grew up here and I care about the community, just like everybody here at this. Even our planners, I greatly appreciate our planners who come in from somewhere else and then give a hundred percent to our, to our community. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, George. I'm John Reich. I've been in Bath since sixty-six, which is quite a few years ago. And I got recruited to the planning commission, what, maybe two decades ago? I think by Joe Benzie, actually. And Joe and I mentored Dan Kramer because we could see that he was really gonna be a lot of potential as a, as a lead for the planning commission. And it really worked real, real well, so I feel good about that. I think it's important, and I'm probably the longest-serving member on this commission that's here presently. And I think corporate history is a great thing to have because hopefully we can learn from the mistakes we made and not keep repeating them. And it's been important for me to look at some of the collateral damage that sometimes we do when we make a certain decision that some of us can't, have a hard time admitting that was wrong, I guess, I should say. And I think one of them was the private road thing that we, we hopefully have a good ordinance now that is, meet the demands for maybe more environmentally friendly development and hopefully have lower costs for some development. That's all I got to say. Lexi, you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Well, I'm not from Bath, but I'm from Camas, Michigan, so I'm still Michigander. I joined the Army coming out of high school, so did that for a while. Then when I finished with all my Army training, I came back to Michigan and thought I should probably get a degree because somebody out there said I was smart. So I said, okay. So I went to college, started getting my degree. Somebody said that I should join ROTC, that he saw potential, so I joined ROTC. So in the spring, I'll commission a second lieutenant, so I'm on track for that. My undergrad is in, very abstract, but it's in comparative cultures and politics. So I do a lot of work in urban public policy. I took one class in urban planning and absolutely fell in love with it. And then I called Miles and said, hey, do you guys have a position at Bath Township? So that's how I got the job here. I also work for the Michigan Library Association, so I do a lot of work on no bans for books. So that's like my other part organization I'm a part of, very passionate about that. And then on the side, I'm a spit instructor, so I love to cycle. So I'm up at like five AM every day, teaching people how to love to bike. So that's pretty much me.
I'm sorry, I was trying to hear five AM and love to bike in the same sentence.
I'm still young, so.
That makes a difference.
Miles, did you might, just for the record?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm originally from Florida, but I would always say that I'm from Benton, Michigan. That's where I grew up. And then graduating high school, I also went into the military. I was enlisted though, so I won't make any officer jokes for Lexi here. But yeah, so I did that, went into the Marine Corps, and I did two deployments in Afghanistan. And then after that, I also wanted to go to college and use that GI Bill. So I went to Michigan and we had a big night last night, so.
Very successful.
Good for us. And then I did, I did a number of things at my time during then. I was working for the Genesee County Parks Department, part-time initially, and then full-time the summer between my undergrad and my grad as a community coordinator. So I got to work on the ground with folks and that was pretty cool. I interned during that time with the City of Flint's Planning Department. And that was a good experience as well. And I also worked for the University of Michigan Department of Outreach. I think now it's their Economic Development Department, I think it's been renamed. Under Paula Knoss, people in the university administration might know who she is. She's a great lady and kind of a mentor of mine. And then I went to grad school at Wayne State, started LLC. And I did GIS consulting on the side for the city and Detroit, Romulus, the university, couple other just private, small entities. Then graduating there, I went and worked for the Western Upper Peninsula Regional Planning Commission, so WOPITER is the acronym for that, it's easier to say than all those words. And then following that, I applied for a job here at Bath and got accepted for an interview. And I came out here to check the place out before I went in for my interview, just to see what it was all about. And at the time, I was a little suspicious of, or not suspicious, I guess, but apprehensive about what this community was about and what this position would look like. This is probably the position where I've had the most contact with the public. And so I was apprehensive about how that would work and what that would be like and what those hours would be like as we sit here late at night on a Tuesday. And I've gotta say, I've really come to value this community a lot. I've really come to value this commission a lot. I feel very lucky to work with a commission like this. I've heard horror stories from my grad planning friends about other planning commissions. And I know we've seen even some drama on the board in the last couple of years. But I've always felt very blessed to be a part of this planning commission. And regardless of the local drama that happens, this community, I think that, I think that there's a lot of really good people in this community. To the point where last year, me and my wife bought a house in the township. I feel very lucky to be buying a house and being a member of this community, so. That's me.
Thank you.
We are very privileged to have you choose us as your home.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Miles, what does, what does GIS stand for officially?
What, Geographical Information Systems. Put me on the spot there.
Sorry, you hear that, you hear that acronym quite often.
It's just, it's mapping software. There's a number of companies that make it and a number of different platforms. But Esri is kind of, they almost have a monopoly, I would say, on the mapping industry.
Yep, they sure do.
I agree with Jason. I think since, since Miles has been here, a lot of changes in, you know, what the planning commission's done. And what I think I've been here long, it's not as long as John, but longer than everyone else has been.
Yeah, you're the second one.
The second, but.
Excuse me. I was a year ahead of you.
Yeah, you were, you left.
All right, never mind. You got it. You took a pass.
Cumulative.
But I, but I think the thing, when I first started with this, it was kind of like, the township has no direction of where they want to go, what they want to be. I think we still struggle with that somewhat. And I was talking to Miles earlier, I think we need to start looking at what we want the township to look like in ten years or fifteen years or twenty years. Because I think we've been floundering way before this. I think it's, it's coming together nicely now. We've got a lot of ordinances and stuff that are going into, into place. Miles been, and if he's correct, we've got a sidewalk ordinance that hasn't been enforced in, I don't know how many years. And trying to correct that. So if we're not gonna enforce an ordinance, get rid of it.
Right, exactly. Yep.
But I think been a lot of improvements.
Yep, thank you, Ray. Yeah, to that extent, I just, I was at the last board meeting and I had talked to Ryan before the board meeting to get some ideas about direction for the planning commission. And one of the things that I asked the board was, where do we want to go in the next five, eight years in Bath as far as development goes? Because in twenty twenty-five, I think, we have to have our master plan ready to submit. It has to be in, if I remember right, in twenty-six, is that correct?
It needs to be adopted in twenty-six.
Yeah, so we've gotta have it pretty much in place by the end of twenty twenty-five. And I think it's important that we start collecting information in the next, maybe starting this fall at the latest.
Yeah, well, we got the workload on the agenda and I mean, you can talk about it.
Right, and that's on the agenda, so. So I, we're kind of moving in that direction and I've just got another meeting with Ryan to talk about that, so.
May I just comment? This is gonna sound like it's counter to what you're saying, but it's, it's, it's in addition to what you're saying. I, I want to honor those who have served in this, on this board, on this commission, as well as the board. There has been a plan. The problem is that there's been many plans because of the nature of our community. And so we have a very divergent group of populations that have very different needs. And what has been really challenging for this commission and the township and all the people who work for this township is trying to find a balance point of meeting those needs. And I think what, what you're referring to is the hard work that the planning commission has done in concert with the township board is identifying the through paths, which we can, we can find balances in those competing needs. And so, and it's hard work, and, and we know it's hard work. It has always been hard work. And it's hard work for the board as, and, and the public comment that we routinely see when, when we make decisions or are about to make decisions that are not happy for some populations, but in alignment with other populations, so.
I think you're right. What I, there's definitely two different sections of the township.
Oh, at least.
The rural, the rural section, it wants to say rural, I can understand. I grew up on a farm in Maine, so I know what rural was like. The town I was in had five hundred people. My eighth grade class was eight people. It was a very big place. But anyway, what I'm concerned about, as the township develops, what we want that development to look like.
Right.
Not just the development itself, but what do we want the buildings to look like? What do we want the street scape to look like, stuff like that? And that's not gonna apply for the entire township, it's only gonna apply as we develop.
That's correct.
But we need to think ahead. I mean, my wife keeps bringing up, how did Ford Road down in the?
Levonia.
Yeah, Levonia area. How'd that get developed? I mean, it's a wide road now, but it's got sidewalks, they're way back off the road. The buildings are way back off the road. That didn't happen by chance.
No, no.
Somebody has some foresight way back then that we need to make this road, instead of sixty-six feet wide, we need to make it three hundred feet wide, I wonder, right away. We won't have that much traffic, but we need to look at that.
An example of that is when we were doing the Webster Road corridor. We really, and you brought it up yourself, how we wanted to wide, make that wider now for future. But how do you do that, how do you do that financially?
You're gonna buy it from landlords.
Kind of, because, because the state kind of works behind the budget and we're trying to work ahead.
Yeah, MDOT. Don't get me going on MDOT, not you too.
I know we just struggled down there.
Yep.
John, we haven't heard about you.
You haven't heard about me?
You did.
Yeah, I did.
I want to hear about some of that, I mean, the intricacies of your industrial experience.
Really? I've worked for twenty-three different places, Ray.
Wow, really?
My shortest was four hours. It was, I probably should have done a better job of interviewing because I got smarter as I got older and I said, started to ask people, why should I come to work for you instead of trying to sell them on why, who I was? Because I made some bad choices.
Okay, we all have.
Yeah, well, we all have, but yes, and sometimes it's how you fix them, it really counts.
I will say that John is a man of principle. And you will never know if he's leaning left or right politically because what he focuses on are the principles.
Yes, that's correct.
And the data and the information. And so, and that's one thing that I've grown to love and appreciate about him.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I want to be known for my integrity, not because I was popular. So I would never run for a public office, to be honest with you.
But you should.
No, I should not. No, I should not. My, my, one of my philosophies is if everybody leaves mad, you did a great job because you didn't pick winners and losers. And I don't want to be in the position of picking winners and losers.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for participating. The work plan is in our packets. I think Miles has done a great job of outlining this.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Miles.
Yep, it's broken down, and if you don't care, John.
No, go for it. Thank you.
Broken down into two spreadsheets, one that's more oriented towards the ordinances and one that's more oriented towards kind of special projects, I guess we could call them. We, this is, so this is last year's work plans. We usually in January will include last year's. I know it's, it's hard to read. I'm gonna zoom in on the topics themselves and not the timelines.
He's made it larger.
Oh, you can see it later too.
So I guess what we're looking for here, and I always like to preface this by, again, we will work as hard as we can on as much as we can and we really try to press out a lot of work. I have a graph somewhere if anyone wants to see it on ordinances passed over the last twenty years and special projects and all the metrics of the department to show that we're putting out more workload than we ever had before. So I guess just trust me on that. And we'll continue to do so, but again, with the work plan, we are not gonna get through all of this in one year, even with the help of consultants. It's a guiding document, it's something we refer to constantly in the department. We're trying to figure out like, what are we doing this week? What do we have time to get into? But we, I want people to be realistic about how much one person and part-time interns can get done in one year. So just not saying we won't give it our best, but just, you know, we're not gonna get all twenty-five ordinances written and adopted in one year, so. We did, so everything in green is what did get pushed all the way through. Everything in yellow is what we are currently having in the works. So like clear cutting tonight, you guys are gonna get a presentation from Lexi about the ordinance we have in the works. And then red is what we haven't gotten into yet. So this is what we got right now. I don't need an answer from anyone tonight. It's usually something we introduce and then that next meeting, we'll be looking for feedback on this spreadsheet or topic ideas for what we need to add for twenty twenty-four. Things that, like environmental mitigation strategy, maybe that is covered now by this conversation we're having about drainage and runoff and grading. That kind of is environmental mitigation in a form, so some of these can be rolled together or parsed out. So yeah, that's what we got, that's what the work plan is all about and that's how the department uses it. So I know I got my notes here, a couple of things as it was discussed already tonight. With John's help, we did take a couple items in front of the board of trustees to look for their feedback, to see if they even wanted us to entertain these ideas. Some of that were, the main topics at hand were looking at our wind and sewer ordinances. I do agree that I think we need to look at those. I think the wind one particularly we need to look at because we have wind standards on the books right now. We need to ensure that those don't, aren't in conflict with the new state guidance. I don't know if they are or not, but we need to look at it, so. That's kind of top of mind for me, crosswalk ordinance. I know we've talked about crosswalks quite a bit. This would probably be more of a regulatory ordinance, something we'd probably work with the road commission on to, to adopt. But just standards around it when new roads are getting established, when private drives or private roads are getting established and they make a cross with a public road. What does that crosswalk look like?
Do you want to give us some feedback on why we need that ordinance? Because this state does not enforce crosswalk ordinances, has to be the local community.
Yep, that's correct, yeah. So it's our guidance, so. We're, go ahead.
So I, I just wanna, it sounds like what you're talking about is something a little bit more complex than what we're looking for related to safe routes to school, which is.
Yes.
I had some, okay, it is more complex.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a more, it goes back to that, what do we want the community to look like? What kind of community are we trying to envision and then what are the tools to make that vision happen? Crosswalks is one of those. And it could even, and again, we can get into all this when we're actually looking at the ordinance, but is it specific to different corridors? Is it just, you know, Park Lake, Webster Road, Chandler? Is it something for every road? These are all the nuances that, you know, this body gets to determine how, what this implementation looks like. But that was one. Oh yeah, the, and then the board also agreed with us cautiously, I'll say, to look at the grading and drainage ordinance. And then I wanted to let everyone know too, you'll see non-motorized plan is on this workload. And then, um, I wanted to let everyone know too, you'll see non-motorized, uh, plan is on this workload, uh, spreadsheet. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that draft copies are being made and will be included to be presented to you guys in next, uh, at the next packet. So just know that's coming down the pipe too. And then I guess the last thing I want to talk about, so everyone can think about is, as, uh, the chair said, um, we got a master plan and comp, master plan, comprehensive plan, whatever you want to call it, coming up in twenty twenty-six. We need to start working on some of the legwork for that. We don't need to, I, well, I guess it's my opinion, obviously, you know, we can get guidance however you guys want to do this. We spent a lot of money on the last plan and we spent a lot of time on the last plan, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, I don't think we need to rewrite every aspect of that plan. I think the plan needs to be updated. There are some parts of the plan that, and, and when I came in in twenty twenty-one, I came in with that plan being ninety percent of the way there. We had to rework all the data part of it. But we really didn't work, rework some of the parts that now, you know, two and a half years into this job, I think are critical. Probably the most critical part that I think a hard look needs to be taken at is the current zoning map and the future land use map. I think some broad conversations need to have be happened, some work sessions need to happen. My recommendation would be starting in this year to go over how the current zoning map is amended. And, um, probably radically changing the future zoning map. Not only because they were recycled from previous plans, but because the township has actually changed a lot in the last ten years. And those maps require that change to be reflected. Not just in demographic changes and housing stock changes, but just where, where physical infrastructure, sewer, water, fiber is in the township. And so that, you know, as everyone here is well aware, plays a role in how this township grows, zoning needs to reflect that. So, that, that would be one of my top level recommendations is let's look at those maps. I would not recommend we start pulling any like census data or anything like that till twenty twenty-five, because then we're just kind of wanting to redo it in twenty twenty-five. Like that was one of the problems prior to my time here is they were pulling census data every year and then they had the decennial in twenty twenty and I was like, of course you want that data, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment on that, I, I came to this commission, made some strong statements about public engagement.
Oh yeah, sure.
And one of the things, just to forewarn, I will advocate for a strong public engagement in this process. And when you talk about the money that was expended, I'm assuming that was based on the formatting of the documents?
Yeah, because we're just a consultant fee to pay for formatting.
I mean, I personally would feel that I would, I would do away with formatting costs and do more with, you know, enticing, uh, community members to provide feedback on what's, and so that we have a good sense of what our community wants, not necessarily what we as a board of privileged individuals wants.
No, I agree with that wholeheartedly and we're actually speaking to that even before the meeting a little bit. I'm hoping that the formatting costs would almost be zero, because we really should just be plugging and playing the new data that we are having come in. As everyone here is well aware and as it was said with the non-motorized plan, engagement though is always the issue, but we obviously will do what we can. And I think you get out of engagement what you put into it, so that there are dollars to be expended through this process, you know, that's where I would.
And you have skill sets and expertise on this commission to support that process.
Yeah, I'm hoping though too with the new position of the rec coordinator and all the networks that she's a part of, that we can leverage those hopefully for some of this engagement as well. So, you know, we'll, we'll try to get as creative as we can with it. So I guess, I don't know if anyone's had time to look at this spreadsheet, um, if there's any initial thoughts on any high-ticket items that anyone has or if anyone.
I guess my preference would be, let's give everybody a chance to look at it and you want to, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Of course.
Maybe get some more feedback. Well, one of the things I think we need to be aware of is that the board is gonna buy some REUs as part of the plant expansion. And we're also gonna put in this retention area down here where the norm faster project is going to be, so we can level out the flow going to the plant. Because right now there's some peaks coming to the plant because of the way the sewage system was designed and the way the buildout's been. But that will give us an opportunity to do some more development, because if all the development happened, it's already been approved on our books as far as the areas. We'd be overbuilt, we wouldn't be able to handle that sewage capacity. So we've got to take a look at that, where it's going to occur, why it's going to occur. And I know there's no feeling at this point on the part of the board members I've talked with or the staff to put township money into infrastructure development. We've always taken the policy that it's, the builders gotta be the one with coming up with the check. So I don't think that there's any, uh, real interest in changing that policy. I think that's got to be part of the planning process as well, because we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on infrastructure and expansion. In fact, I would like to see us recoup the REU cost in terms of tax, is tap-in fees, which most utilities do. Yeah, I've been part of those studies at one time or another.
Yeah, that's definitely something we need to look at. They should, they should be changing, if not every year.
Every other year.
Every other year, so you don't get a big hit. But from what I've heard here is that the tap-in fee hasn't changed in years.
No, it hasn't, not in about a decade or.
Tap-in fee should be based on the value of your sewer system.
Correct.
Which has got to be a whole lot more now than it was twenty years ago.
Yes, we've spent a lot of money on infrastructure improvement.
That was involved in sewer studies, in very township, and, yeah, we would evaluate our sewer rates every year.
Yep. Yep, I think every other year is reasonable, but, yeah.
I think so too.
What, what's the opinion, would you like to take a look at this for a couple of weeks and talk about it next meeting?
Sure.
Is that, everybody concur?
I'm not that familiar with it, so I'd like to be.
Good, well, if you want to have a discussion.
Yeah.
You know, how to get a hold of it.
There you go. Question, um, for the definitions slash ordinances cleanup amendments, can you describe what that entails? Because I can see that as, I, I have a hard time seeing that as a four-month process in what I'm thinking.
Well, I mean, I guess it's a, it's a process, it gets dragged out, one, if the process is concluded, so it's done, this was done in twenty twenty-three. But it gets dragged out because it's just on the cycle with everything else. That one was, we actually went through the definitions and there was areas of conflict where, let's say like the word farm was defined in the ordinance in four different spots. And the definitions didn't match throughout the ordinance, so it might be in the zoning ordinance in one way, but then it was in a regulatory ordinance in another way. And then we also just went through and looked for grammatical formatting errors.
You did all of that for the entire code of ordinances?
For the entire code of ordinances, but there were a number, outside of zoning, there were a number of regulatory ordinances that we did get into. So, there was a, a push last year and I don't think it really went anywhere, where we actually, and I think the board meeting, you guys may even discuss it. Where we were looking at even, um, having, uh, what's the, Unicode to help us go through some of the ordinance and have them give recommendations for formatting and structure. Just because with even this, within the zoning ordinance itself, there are sections that aren't formatted like other sections.
Yep.
Now internally in planning, we've adopted a, um, a formatting structure, so every new ordinance we write, every ordinance we amend follows the same structure, so we're trying to move towards uniformity. But yeah, that's, I would say, a kind of cleanup ordinance or whatever you want to call it, that's something that's probably should have, be happening.
As I say, ongoing, right?
It's pretty much an ongoing.
That was a bigger one where we went through and it was, it's probably, there was even some reluctance from some, um, board members. I think Marie at the time did when I adopted, because it just felt like it was, um, she felt like it was too much of a change, it was eighty pages of changes. But it was maybe one word on each page, you know, typo or formatting error. So, yeah. All right, but that sounds great, John, we'll, we'll bring this back next time.
Thank you. George?
Miles, how, how much would it, uh, work could it be to, to pull that wind ordinance? Is that low hanging fruit or is that going to be in depth?
I mean, I think it will be in depth because it's technical. Anything energy related is technical. You know, we have to, we have to partner with people to understand the topic more than us and whenever we have to bring somebody else in, now we're at the whim of their timeline. So it makes it difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are some new, go ahead, Ray.
One other thing, on that same note, a segue of what George just mentioned, I mentioned it at the last board meeting. There's, there's a great gray area between where the, uh, uh, commercial, uh, state mandated regulations take effect uh, for so, wind and solar, alternative energy and, you know, starting out like a, in, in a residential area. I mean, you could, you know, the amount of panels and, I can't remember the, the statistics I cited at that, but there's a, there's a big gap in there for potential, uh, need for regulation that we should look at, I think.
We have several trainings coming up too, because I think I even admitted at the board level at our last meeting, you know, I have to get schooled up on this. All of these regulations and laws are brand new to, you know, the state, but the planning industry as well. So, uh, myself and Beth will be attending one on, um, you know, off-campus training this month and then next month we have another, uh, legal training scheduled, so.
Isn't this state regulations kicking at like three hundred megawatts or something like that?
And I think that's what you're saying, yeah, there's a barrier before they kick in.
It's a hundred for wind, isn't it, and fifty for solar?
It was, it was, I was surprised it was that large. I, I would have thought that they would have tried to take control at a smaller scale, but no.
Well, the plan is to bracheted down as we get our foot in the door, and get the door open more.
That could be true, yeah.
Yeah. But there are some very innovative designs for wind, uh, energy coming from other countries that are more interested in small-scale wind as opposed to utility scale like we are, because, let's face it, there's a lot of money on the table in the utility scale industry as opposed to somebody that's got a small community and of five hundred people out in Maine that wants to put in a small alternative energy facility for their community.
Well, there's a lot of small countries and municipalities, I would say, in Europe especially, that actually have to buy their, their, uh, utilities from a larger country. You know, because they're not large enough to create their own.
To clarify, is, is the intent to work on regulation for utility level, wind and solar? Or are we focusing on less than utility level?
Well, I don't think it's been determined yet, I mean, that's kind of what we're asking you guys, what, what guidance do you want us to work on for the next year?
I, I would say that if, if we're gonna look at utility level, let's learn from the lessons that are, I think, being learned in, at the county level, because this apparently is quite a hot topic.
It is. Yeah, in Clinton County drafting an ordinance that's so restrictive that I'm sure it'll go right to MPSC, I mean.
Yeah.
One, that's one of the problems, yeah, and I think John's right, and I heard something similar in Clinton County, which is the ordinance is dead under the water, because they're just kind of passive, right? If it's to that scale. Now, I don't know what they, the ordinance speaks to, but yeah, well, of course partner with the county if they've already, uh, down here, probably contact their planner.
Partnering with the county, but learning from the county.
Yeah, but call off their planning department, what you guys, what did you write, what do you think is wrong about it, what do you think's wrong about it? They have a new.
We'll have that discussion.
Yeah, well, let me know.
I don't know.
They have a new planner up there, I haven't, you know, heard, um.
That process, I have opinions about the process up there.
He's been there for a few months, but yeah, he's fairly new, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
But, but that ordinance was drafted by Foster, Swift and those legal people.
Okay.
They're the ones that wrote it, so.
Yeah.
They just contracted with them to write the ordinance for them.
Okay, with direction from the county.
Well, yes, to make it very exclusive, I should say. How, can we move on? So Alexis, you're up.
My time to shine, so, perfect. Okay, so I am helping Miles with the land clearing ordinance, but the one that's presented to you guys tonight is a very early draft. As I'm going through this ordinance, I have a lot of questions for you guys, I don't want to assume anything. So that you'll find some things in this ordinance at this moment that like might contradict with itself a little bit, and that was for me to remind myself of questions to ask you guys. So even to start with just the definitions, I took the liberty of changing it to land clearing instead of clear-cutting. Because I feel like land clearing has a bit of a different definition, but if you guys would still like to stick with defining this as a clear-cutting ordinance rather than land clearing, let me know. I also stole from East Lansing, they had tree removal and layering clearing. But I also thought that tree removal is a little bit more specific, they're talking about trees only, and land clearing can also include trees as well. So it's something broader, it's less defined, but yet more defined. But I wanted to make sure what definitions you guys are looking for or what else you have to add for the definition section, if that makes any sense.
Very much so. I would think, you know, land clearing, we, you know, symbolically call it scrub, you know, just bushes and everything. But that, that can mitigate erosion a great deal, you know? And there are places that trees don't grow, like a meadow, you know, or something of that nature that may need to be there for ecological reasons. So I think that, that, uh, change, a slight change of definition is, is good.
Okay.
I think clear-cutting has a just inherent negative connotation to it as well.
Yeah.
This feels more neutral.
I think when I, when I look at this, you know, to me, what, what are we trying to regulate? Well, my concern is, is having a development, development committee, which has already happened at the corner of my street. And they clear cut the entire corner without thinking about what, in the future, what that could be, what those trees could be used for, for screening against Chandler Road and stuff like that. Now, I wouldn't say what he did, in, in a way, it's almost land clearing, but he's got a lot of stuff left there, but there's also on senior court where they're building homes now, they're coming in there and they're clear-cutting, they're not taking all the brushes, they're not taking all the, uh, dirt and stuff until they actually start building something, but what, what some places people do is they come in, they cut all the trees down and don't do anything else. So it can, it can go back up and scrub whatever. My concern is I don't think we should be cutting trees down until we know what the land is going to be used for. And, and so, I was talking to Miles before the meeting, I said, you know, what requirements do we have for somebody who wants to build a home in an established subdivision? We've already approved the subdivision, which includes a grading permit for the subdivision. But when they're building individual home, we should require certain things of that before we issue them a building permit. And they shouldn't be able to go in and clear cut that full subdivision when we approve it, they should only cut trees down as they build the homes. You know, that's what I'm trying to concern, because there are places, in Reno, is what I'm talking about, there's one place out there where they had three or four beautiful trees right at the corner of the lot, they left them there until they put the foundation in, then they cut them down.
Yeah, after the foundation was in.
Why, I don't know. And so that's the kind of stuff, I'd like to get some kind of a handle on whether we can control that somehow. It's when you issue a building permit for, for a building, including that, what their site plan is, what their landscape plan is, the whole thing before we give a building permit.
May I offer a counter?
Yep.
So some of the things that I'll bring to the table are, um, how does this apply to agricultural lands? Um, are there exemptions to agricultural lands? How do you define a half acre? So if a farmer decides to clear out a, I don't know, like a quarter mile wind row, that's twenty feet that accumulates to a half acre, does that qualify? I think about the corner of Kleiss and Chandler where, um, there was some clear cut of, I, I think it was autumn olive? Uh, or the invasive species of olives and it's just scrubbing. You know, is that something that we would be concerned about? I mean, Ray, I, I hear you, like, you know, I would not want to see, uh, you know, beautiful timber and screening that's, uh, removed out of high-density or medium-density residential, but, you know, there are applications, I, out, at least where I live, where, you know, clearing out land is in service of conservation. I, when I bought my place, I, it was mostly spruce trees, which had a needle cast disease. And over a period of fifteen years, I have been clearing out those trees. So what's the timeframe? You know, is it a one and done over a period of a week or, you know, is clear-cutting, uh, take place over years? And so those types of definitions I think are going to be critical to, uh, making an ordinance that's going to be effective for our purposes. I, I do agree, having a plan, of course, makes sense and is in alignment with a quote, planning commission. But I think there's a lot of, uh, situations where when, you know, we create an ordinance that may be overly restrictive to certain populations or certain segments of our community.
Well, if you read seventy-eight thirty-eight, it says applicability and it says shall apply to parcels where commercial land uses are proposed. So that.
So everything gets moot that I just said?
Well, yeah. I don't know whose it was.
Sorry.
That might have been anybody's. Then this ordinance doesn't give that any teeth at all. I mean, you're talking about commercial uses here. We're, we're looking at parcels like.
No, no, no. Thank you for clearing. I overlooked that part, so I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to point that out. That, that's a different reach than what we're talking about right now. So you, you, you're going on kind of a different plan here altogether than you are when you're talking about commercial use. Cause we already have a lot of teeth that we can use in the, when the, somebody comes up for a site plan. As opposed to a building permit for a house.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Uh, that seventy-eight thirty-nine, the, the purpose, that paragraph exemplifies what we're trying to.
Right, but, but if you read thirty-eight, it says.
Oh, sure, it says commercial, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, but and if, again, that's just the guidance that we've been given in the past. So, cause we're trying to walk again, just like everything else, we talked, I think, earlier about this fine line that we're trying to find the different interests of the township. So where this is one of those ordinances where we are trying to thread that needle a little bit. And on the ends of the spectrum here, uh, government control and an effort to mitigate, um, conflict and the potential of affecting your neighbor's, uh, property values through doing some kind of land clearing that negatively affects them. We don't want anybody's house to be devalued because of the activities of another individual. But then on the other end of the spectrum is property rights. I mean, it's the classic planning dilemma.
Yep.
And so we're trying to thread the needle, one way that was proposed to thread that is by worrying more about the commercial side of things versus the residential. Uh, there's plenty of municipalities that get into both, and there's municipalities that get into neither. So this is just where we're landing right now. It doesn't mean this can't be expanded. It doesn't mean we can't go in, uh, more restrictive, less restrictive direction, but this is what, you know, we got for our first draft. There's a lot of highlighted information that Lexi's gonna go over, that she needs feedback. But that's our broad five thousand foot view of what we're trying to do here.
Right. So, so we have a landscaping ordinance.
We do.
I mean, help me understand what the difference is between this and what could be accomplished within the landscaping ordinance.
Proactive and reactive?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the landscaping ordinance is something that's applied, um, I guess in my interpretation, landscaping ordinance. For when developments are coming on the review side of the process.
Oh, so you're saying this is land, clear cutting prior to any sort of submission?
Yeah, yeah, and that's the main thing there. Like, so the Ace Hardware is a perfect example of that. Uh, Ace, when Ace Hardware came in, they clear cut six, eight months out. I mean, before they even stepped foot in front of the planning commission, they were bulldozing the property. For them, it all worked out. The negative part is what happens when it doesn't work out. As we know, his developments aren't guaranteed. They might clear cut five acres. I mean, the I property next to, and to Wit, next to that mini mall, is a prime example of that.
So, but all right, and I, and I'm sorry that, I know I'm, I have a streak of bad questions here, so. So, at what point do you know if the intent is commercial versus not commercial?
Well, that, that is an interesting question. And I think that is a good one.
The design of this ordinance though, is that everything that's like applied will all come to you first. So let's say it's like, it could tell the line between residential, commercial, industrial, whatever. You guys would have the power to help decide if this is even something, a permit you would even want to look at in the first place. Cause you could get the permit, they say it's commercial, they come bring it to you. You guys have the power to say, this isn't commercial. You know, we don't have.
Let me, yeah, I get what you're saying. So the problem is, if they're coming to you, then we already know it's commercial. Because they came to you. How do we know on the front end, right, the eyes? They buy, uh, uh, twenty, when, if the eyes are watching, we're just using as an example.
Gotta have that disclaimer.
Um, yeah, um, if they buy twenty acres and they clear cut it and then we go, the, by this ordinance, there's an enforcement mechanism. So like, if they clear cut without a permit to do so on approval from the municipality, then they get charged X amount of dollars for like every we're determining how to do it, but right now, we're thinking for every square foot of clear cutting, or every acre of clear cutting.
No, but.
But what, if the eyes come in, they say, they could fire back and they say, I'm gonna build a house there. What the hell are you talking about? Okay, very well, uh, I guess we could say very, one, what was think, I need to think about ways, that's a good question. You always have good questions. So we'll think about a way to mitigate that and identify that. But what I foresee is, okay, all right, it's a single family home. Six months later, they come in with a permit for a shopping center.
Yeah.
Fee, immediate fee, right? Cause no, you told us it's a single family home. We're not looking at anything till you pay the ten thousand dollars you owe us for the clear cutting without a permit.
You're talking a penalty, a penalty fee.
So it, it would be a retroactive clause, right? So.
It'd be retroactive in their case, because they try to skirt the system. But if everyone's doing it the appropriate way, they would come and seek the clear cutting permit because they knew down the line, they'd be bringing a commercial project.
So say a certain developer comes to our community every three years with a plan that is just terrible and we reject them and then, but.
We've had a couple of those, yeah.
But I, I mean, like, how far out do you go back? I mean, so say I want to develop something.
But they might never clear cut.
But no, say that, say, I know I need to clear cut and this annoying community has this clear cut ordinance. I know that market right now, I'm not gonna be able to get the investments until three years from now.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna clear cut and just say, hey, it's, it's for, I don't like the trees, or I wanna improve the, the, the road, uh, clearance. Or, you know, whatever the rationale may be, that's not commercial. And then down the road, they say, hey, we changed your mind. I mean, are, does this, this, does this ordinance have any teeth then? I mean, we're relying upon people who don't have enough foresight.
Yeah, no, this, these are good questions. We need to spell that out. So that's something we need to identify is how retroactive would that fee structure can go back? Is it one year? And we'll probably set, set a time on it.
Yeah.
Would that be transferable if they sold it to a different entity?
Owned by a parent company.
Well, yeah. Right.
Right.
What, what, what would happen, we just said, you can't cut trees, you know, one or two trees is no problem, but you, you can't clear cut anything, not which you're gonna use it for, without coming to the township first.
Well, that.
And, and then we decide. They wanna put a commercial thing in here in four years. Fine, cut the trees down in three years. Don't do it today.
Well, the good news.
When you submit, when you actually submit your plan for your, for your commercial development, then we'll take a look at giving you a permit to cut the trees down.
Well, doing anybody makes it, this is a double edged sword, because doing anybody, it makes it cleaner. It gets rid of that whole commercial issue that we're talking about. Now, it's a little bit easier from the enforcement side, because then we're just looking for anybody clear cut.
Yep.
But then we also, but then we're going more restrictive on the, I'm, and I'm not advocating for either, but we're more restrictive on the private property rights side. And we're, we're also putting up staff and the township's taxpayer in the position where they could get in a legal fight more often.
Yep.
You know, cause now I'm going, when people hear that municipality is going after Trader Joe's, Walmart, the eyes, wha- whoever it ends up being, I think there's a certain amount, cause one thing about planning is, you know, uh, there's a lot of perception, there's politics involved in planning too. And I try to live in the real world and factor all this in.
Yep.
Um, if we are seen going after the Walmarts of the world, public perception and the township is one way, right? Hey, I'm on Facebook, township is in a legal battle with Walmart. Everyone's like, good. What's Walmart doing? Coming in, clear cutting all of our property sucks.
Yep.
Um, township's in battle with Park Lake residents over them cutting down their trees, whole different perception.
You bet.
And so that's what I'm worried about, I guess. But that's my concern. I'm not advocating either way, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'll advocate. I, I don't want to touch the property owner. If, if it's, I think this is where it's essential that we have an up to date zoning map that says this is commercial property. If it's commercial property, then the ordinance applies. I don't care what, whether you're gonna build there in ten years, or you're never gonna build there. The ordinance still applies.
So, but I mean, we have use by right, so I, you know, situations where someone wants to build a kennel in medium density. Uh, residential, I, I mean, I, I get it, and it's, 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 it's not.
So do you want to say any place where a special use permit is required?
Well, which is all the districts, right?
No, no, uh-uh.
No, it's all, there's, there's some kind of special use, to, to your point, John. I, it, it, that would be nice if we had, the solution you just gave would work. Except for the fact that Bath Township actually has, uh, progressive, not in the political sense, but like in the ideological sense of the word, um, housing policy and the fact that we allow housing as a by right use in every district. You can build a house by right, a single family home by right and high density development.
Right.
So, and that's not actually super common in the planning industry. Now, the new thinking in the planning industry, cause we're in a housing crisis, is to actually move towards a model that looks like that.
Right.
So we can't say in Bath unless we were to do away with housing in those districts through some type of comprehensive zoning reform. Saying like, within the de-development and high density development districts, you need a, uh, clear cutting permit.
Right.
Now, we could still do that district by district here in Bath, and that could solve most issues, cause most development is going to be in those districts.
Correct.
How the current map is drawn, and again, this could be fixed by just fixing the map, which we're attempting to do. But there, there would be single family homes affected within those districts. There's lots of single family homes.
There could be, yes, that's very possible.
Could, could this be flipped in terms of, uh, restricting commercial developments on land that has been clear cut within the past five years?
Previously clear cut? Is that what you're saying?
If, yeah, we're gonna go retroactive.
I don't think you could do that.
I think we need, to your point earlier, to set some kind of, like, moving forward. If you clear cut it five years ago, that will apply. Like, if somebody, we pass this ordinance.
Yeah.
They come in in twenty twenty, uh, late twenty-four, they do some clear cutting of ten acres. And then they say, oh, it's a single family home. Then they come back in twenty-seven with a permit for a shopping center. We'll say, you did that in twenty-four, this is twenty-seven, it's a five year retroactive, you owe us ten grand.
But going to Kate's comment about change of ownership, does that, does that not complicate?
It complicates it. We'll have to factor in transferable fees, but that's easy. I mean, the, we could even copy some of our language out of the marijuana permitting which has a whole chapter about transferring permits.
Could those fees just go on the tax rolls?
They'll go to the general fund.
Those, I mean.
You mean, how would they be collected?
Yeah, and that's transferable to the next owner, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if they pay the tax, but hopefully they would, the idea is that the fee structure is, you wanna set a fee high enough where it scares developers. So they comply with the permitting process, which will be a much lower fee. It shouldn't cost developers too much to go through the permitting process, cause what we're trying to achieve as a permitting process isn't revenue. We're trying to achieve them complying and creating sustainable development.
We're trying to save trees, aren't we?
Yeah, you want a low cost for permit, a high cost for not complying.
Can I, oh, go ahead, George.
So I have got a couple of questions. One is, um, you know, I'm not looking for answers. Can we, can we do this through the zoning and or, uh, development areas?
It'd be a regulatory ordinance.
Regulatory. And then other thing is, uh, some of these, these tree cutting ordinance, uh, areas that we speak of. For example, your spruces, them trees aren't very old. Like, what are we looking at? Like, if you have a swamp and it just let, like, farmers have fields that are, they farm, and when they stop farming them, they go back into woods. They're not that old. What, what's the harm in clear cutting for that? So that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand. We have trees that are three or four inches around. Three or four inches around that are not old trees. And I know that, so now we have new birds that go into that area or bees or bugs. I, I get that, but it's constantly changing all the time just by natural, natural things. Or you have a person that comes in, uh, and like Jason's place. That place didn't have them trees that one time. Somebody came in and planted all them blue spruces, you know, in rows. So, you know, that's what I'm, I'm kinda trying to wrap my head around and understand, why are we regulating something that's?
Right.
Well, how far back do you go? I mean, all of Michigan has been clear cut as well, right?
But you, you know, you, you think the old growth and some of the big trees, and then to Ray's point, he, he's got the neighborhood that had the trees cut down that were growing. Where my daughter lives, her house is the only house that has them trees. And everybody dislikes her trees. They like her as a person, but they dislike her yard. Because they have all cleared their trees out.
Yep.
They don't have to rake leaves or nothing. The only re- leaves they have to rake are my daughter's leaves. So that, that's an issue with them. But she's the only one that's got oak trees, many, in her yard. But it is, you know, a lot of them don't want to deal with that.
Yeah.
How, how large are lots you're talking about? It's regular subdivision lots or.
See, I don't think this, this shouldn't apply, I don't think. And I think we're trying to make it too complicated. This should not apply to single family homes that exist already. If you've got a home, we can't tell them, they can't cut that tree down if it dies, or even if it's, they just wanna do some re-.
Right, but like, but the house.
This should not, but this should not apply to single family homes, like, keep, people, keep bringing up Park Lake area. I think Park Lake is totally developed. We're not telling them they can't cut a tree down.
So what about the property that's adjacent to where Cussler cut down those trees? That we had rezoned as medium density residential. Isn't that a single family home on acreage? I mean, what if they were to clear out that land? That would seem more disruptive from like, I think, the perspective that you're bringing to the table. Um, I, and, and this, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm, I'm trying, this is a really complex issue.
And you're talking about the white houses, just the south of Cussler's, where you cut this.
Yeah.
Well, and there were four or five houses along, maybe one that, long Chandler Road on that side of the street.
Right.
That go back pretty deep.
Yeah, the property doing.
Yeah.
And there's some large trees.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe for a single family home like that, you can say, okay, you, you can cut down a tree within seventy-five feet of your house or something like that, but you don't go beyond that.
You can have people pitch for extra yards.
One, one thing.
But then, but most, most people, like, the example we're talking about right now, the people back there behind those houses, that own some of that land, I've talked to them and they say, well, we, and that land back there is actually zoned rural.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
They're backing, cause that's the way it's zoned, and I don't want, I don't want development in here, so I don't want you to rezone it or anything.
Lexi can talk about it more here, because we did look at, but one thing is, um, we are trying, we have to think too about, again, like, we don't want to write an ordinance that we're not gonna use. We wanna write ordinance that's enforceable, so we gotta think about our capacity to enforce.
Correct.
And so we wanna talk about like how we looked at, or the municipality that were tree specific and why they went with more of a just square footage model.
So there are lots of municipalities that do what you're talking about of like specific trees. That's why a lot of municipalities have tree removal and laren clearing, cause they're two different entities. Tree removal is talking about like the big oak tree in your yard, like it is talking about residential districts and saving people's private property and that kind of thing. Land clearing is supposed to be more for a business coming in and wanting to, you know, clear cut the whole land and get rid of it. It's also supposed to protect your wetlands, like vegetation too, is another reason. And I think it's also there just so legally, if somebody does come in and clear cut, you can have an enforcement action. But the only problem with Bath Township doing an ordinance that is more.
Tree specific.
Tree specific, is that we don't have an arborist. We don't have somebody on staff that could be able to tell us like.
That's an add a western tree, that's an old tree.
Because a lot of that would probably fall onto our department, right? Like going and checking if the tree is, and I'm not, again, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an arborist. I'm not any of those things, right? So we would have to have it on staff. But we have talked about is having that fee scale though, as well, that could pay for that. So if you want to remove, you know, a tree and you're not sure, you could have it in the permitting process, the permit pays to some, covers the price of the arborist. But that is like a very tricky area, cause and it's like, okay.
The more complicated we get, the harder.
Right, so it becomes a very built out ordinance. So I've seen ordinance that were like twenty-five, thirty pages long. But those people were really dedicated to planting old trees. So, I've seen ordinance that were like twenty-five, thirty pages long, but those people were really dedicated to planting old trees, because their communities had that need. When we presented this ordinance, there what didn't seem to be as much of a need or want to do individual tree protection. More so like, we don't want people coming in and just land clearing all of this stuff and then never building and just leaving it ugly. But we can build out more of these things, just like keep in mind like, like what you have said, where you want Bath to look like in ten years. You know, what's like the end goal for this?
I think the good feedback that we've gotten so far is like the areas that we haven't thought about. And I mean, that's one of the big benefits for us as, you know, planning staff, as we get to come before you guys. And you guys will think about angles and things like transfers of licenses, like what are there, how many years are we going back? Those are the things that we can build into the idea we already are working with here and shore this up. But if we're gonna do some kind of like, uh, total overhaul of the idea we're working with, we kinda need to know that like early on. Like if we're going to more tree specific, we need to rewrite, we need to basically rewrite this whole thing. That's not what we're talking about tonight.
Go ahead, Ray.
I agree.
I'm not advocating for tree specific at all. But I think, I think we're trying to make it too complicated. In the, when you're talking about how far back we're gonna, I don't know what you mean by how far back we're going, going to go. There's a tree, there's a lot here now that's got all trees in it. I don't care if the trees started growing two years ago or twenty years ago, you can't cut them down until you've had it prepared to do it. I don't care how old the trees are. If you don't put a size on them, that's one thing, you know, they've got four inches in here, okay? So, I mean, there's, there's an area.
Well, because under the current ordinance, if they said it was a single family home, then we, we wouldn't enforce it all right now.
Right. I mean, there's a, there's an area at the corner of State and Chandler Road where they came in and they cleared out underneath the tree. Didn't kind any trees down, but all the brushes and stuff like that, they cleared it all out. Wish they'd do it again, because it helps the site distance at the corner.
Yeah.
And I don't have any problem with that. Problem I have is, is when they come in like on senior court and there's another lot that's there today, it looks to me like they've clear cut the whole doggone lot and they can build another house.
Yeah.
Well, what's the house footprint gonna look like before you do that?
I'm, you're.
That's a subdivision, that's a subdivision, so that's, by the way, commercial.
Yeah, you're advocating though, it is a subdivision, you could even write in like, you could cut the difference between commercial and single family home and just move that needle closer by saying any P U D. Any, any single family home within a P U D. So, you could do that, that's one way to move the needle without going all the way to including single family homes. But I feel like the, this is my opinion again now. I feel like the further you move the needle towards just every land use needs to have this type of permit, the harder it's gonna be at the board level to get this ordinance adopted.
Well, talking about single family homes, because we talked about this.
Or even pass through this body, because I'm hearing, I'm counting at least four people that aren't.
These people that wanna build a home out there have gotta get a building permit.
Yes.
Before they can get that building permit, they've gotta submit a plan, they show us where the grading's gonna be. And what they're, what they want the lawn to look like. And if there's a lot of trees, we gotta tell them, tell us where those trees are.
Yeah, but that's on our process now.
I know it's not, I know it's not, that's what I'm saying, it should be.
You're advocating for that and I'm, again, like I'm, I'm fine with that, because I am by nature, somebody that just loves order.
That would have to carve this order, so that can be part of your building permit requirements.
Yeah, boy, you know, because the building, the building permit process, they're restricted by what's in the state building code. So, they only require what's by the state building code. Now, we can have a local ordinance in addition to that. I think that's what we're talking about tonight. But I feel like going that far down the spectrum, it's just gonna be politically hard at this body, if not definitely the board.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ray.
Say, uh, say I, a private individual own a five acre parcel. And I decide, I wanna sell this, so I sell it and I happen to sell it to a commercial entity. They buy the five acre parcel, it's got a lot of trees on it.
Okay.
And, uh, they go in there and cut them all down. How would they even know if we had an ordinance against cutting trees down? Because that's been de rigueur for the last three hundred years.
I think Dan probably said it best when we've talked about some of this ignorance of the law doesn't make you.
Well, exactly, that's very true. But, um, as I'm, as I said, you know, right now as, as it stands, they could buy a five acre parcel and just go in there and clear it and then market it, uh.
And these, these developers are a little bit, um, they, they know. I mean, they read our ordinance, they're involved, they're watching the meetings.
I was gonna say that the opposite is what's the concern, that the negotiation with you is that you clear cut it as a private landowner before they buy it for commercial uses. That then it bypasses all the rest of.
Well, that's another entity. What, what I'm saying is.
No, that would be a concern.
Yeah, almost the same thing. I mean, we, we don't even know there's an ordinance. I mean, you know, it, all through history, we've been able to clear our land, you know, owners' rights.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
I guess, I guess I'm saying, how do they find out about it?
Yeah, I mean, obviously with the ordinance of this.
Township newsletter.
Yeah, obviously the ordinance of this type, there needs to be some kind of like public media camp, just like we'll do with the sidewalk saying like, hey, there has been a change. You need to be aware and we'll do our best. Um, the concern that Jason brought in the scenario that you're bringing up, I think is the more real one, which is, I have five acres. I got somebody on the phone and they're offering me a lot of money, but they're smart and they know that they need you homeowner to clear cut first. That's a, that would be a real concern and something that's not covered by this ordinance. I, then I default to a classic plain, planning saying though, which is, you gotta plan for the eighty percent, not the twenty.
That's correct.
You're not gonna cover every loophole and every aspect of life, you're just, it's impossible.
My thought with this.
And if somebody finds a loophole, what you're done.
Yeah. I mean, my thought with this is that, I mean, if this is a stepping stone towards something about individual tree regulation, that's a non-starter for this board, uh, commissioning and township board. Um, and this community, I mean, that's, that's really what we're saying. I have no issue moving forward with this and testing it out to see, I mean, uh, limited to commercial intended uses. We have nothing and if the intent is commercial and if the, and, and we can monitor, uh, if people are, you know, sidest- sidestepping this process. And we can still hammer them during this, other planning processes.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because that is kinda the nature of planning, that is the approach we're taking a little bit with the private drives, which is, we don't, this, there's externalities that are created that are unforeseen. Right now, we have nothing on the books. So, any direction towards, you know, something is moving in. If, if the objective is, is to preserve natural area in the township from commercial development, moving towards anything would be positive.
Yeah. Fits with our master plan.
I guess, I don't understand why it makes a difference with the land, if, if it's just vacant land right now. Why does it matter whether it's gonna be, right now, whether it's gonna be commercial or residential? Don't cut the trees down until we know what you're gonna do with that property.
I'm gonna use the restroom while y'all talk about this.
I don't know, I don't wanna be the only one like covering both sides of the debate, so.
I mean, I guess, I guess, I think we're making it too complicated.
My perspective is on the same line as yours. If it's vacant and you're cutting it down and you don't have a plan, we're trying to say, hang on, yeah.
Don't cut them down.
I mean, again.
But what if you don't like my plan?
Well, that's what happens here.
Yeah.
I think, but our, but that's where our master plan comes in, what we want the township to look like in the future. It, it kinda, to me, it comes to another thing, is that, and I think we now have an ordinance that requires people to put in street trees. I think we need one.
Yeah.
Because if you look, and, and we need another ordinance to put in street trees, the type of tree you put in. If you drive down Hawk Hollow Drive and look at the different kinds of trees that go down the street, it's a joke.
Make sure you remember that for the, um, workload, we need to, and the land. That would be an item, I'll write that down.
They've got shrub trees, they've got white birch trees, they, they aren't street trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paper birch trees.
Yeah, it's like, so that's.
Junk trees or bringing in species we don't want.
And, and like was part before, I think, the, uh, trees that are dying on, on Jason's property or the shrub trees that Ray brought up. We shouldn't be worried about those either. Or if some farmer wants to cut down trees to make another, the farmer land, okay, he's got a reason to cut them down.
Yeah, that's agricultural though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's agriculture.
Yeah, there'll be exemption for ag, obviously.
So, wouldn't that involve a zoning or land use man in itself?
Well, you know, though, we're not giving people options when we tell them, you've gotta have this many trees on your private property that's a subdivision lot. Or they gotta be this size. There's people that don't want a sidewalk on their property.
Yeah.
I know of a number of subdivisions where people did not wanna buy there because they didn't want a sidewalk on their property. They were a dead end street or they were a very low traffic area and they didn't want the sidewalk. And there's areas where people don't want trees. I've got, uh, there was a, people bought a house about three years ago, a couple of miles from me. The first thing they did was they cut down almost every tree that was there.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want the mess of the trees, quite honestly, and I know. They wanted more sunlight and I understand that.
Actual road.
But we, we're gonna, we're not gonna control that with this ordinance, at least I don't see the way. They bought the land, they built a house and they wanna cut the trees down around their house, I can see why.
Well, where are you gonna draw the line of what's around their house though, Ray? Because it sounds to be like you'd like to regulate all the trees on their lot.
No, I don't think so.
Is this, is this kind of getting into like a green space ordinance?
I don't know. I don't know where it's going, Ray.
Lexi, is that, there, there are green space ordinance?
He definitely is, getting more into like, so people do, so like East Lansing is more of like what this is based off of. They just have this on the books and then they don't really have anything. They have it, but I'm not, I can't speak for East Lansing, but this is like more so based off of like the other municipalities around here. But like Ann Arbor has a tree removal, land clearing, green space, landscaping. It's very built out, so those are like things that could be involved in a different ordinance that we could talk about too. Another thing we would talk about with this one particularly is the combination of land clearing and a grading ordinance. So, lots of municipalities to combat some of the problems that have been brought up, do like a grading permit and a land clearing permit together. So, you have two things, but that's something that would be brought to you guys, that's something you guys are interested in.
And the grading plan is something that, uh, and we, and that's on our workload too as an item for this year. But the grading plan is something that's much more common to be coupled with a building permit and can mitigate some of this. Then you see like a, a tree removal permit.
Right.
Another thing though too, just to keep in mind, because there are effects to everything we're talking about. Right now in Bath Township, when you pull a building permit for a single family home, the turnaround time on that from, you know, submitting, walking in the door and giving the application packet to receiving your permits is about a month. Um, in Ann Arbor, it's six months to a year.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, everything, there's cause and effect to everything.
I think we should keep them separate, the grading and the, and the, uh, clear cutting, yeah, uh, land clearing.
That's good, I, I agree, but just know that some of these issues we're talking about might be identified in that other ordinance.
The reason I said that is because of the residential and commercial aspect of it.
Okay, so you guys have given us a lot to think about. I, Lexi does have a number of highlighted items she wants to go through and just get feedback, so just for our purposes of actually trying to write some of this. Um, she's gonna roll through some of these highlighted items, um, and if we can just focus on like the language of those particular items.
After our conversation, some of these might not even matter anymore. I'll go through like what we have said. Um, my biggest question was in section seventy-eight forty was, how big do you want the land clearing to apply to? So, some municipalities are one half acre, some are two, as big as two acres, like we don't care, but now it's like getting too big. Some of them are a quarter of an acre, so if you guys have any, or you guys can take time to think about it, send me some notes and just let me know, but that's something I, yeah, go ahead.
One comment I have is, scale it to, uh, maybe setback ordinances or, uh, like size of parcel.
Okay.
Um, because a half acre on a forty acre parcel is nothing, a half acre on a, you know, a high density residential is huge.
That's a good point, Jason.
Very good point.
Yeah, and item two under that same section, Lexi, where it says, subject approval of the zoning administration. Uh, I used to do survey work with a survey company and we cleared a lot of trails without anybody's permits.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, you're talking about a path that's two to four feet wide, so you can run a survey line down it and I don't wanna have to get a permit for that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next thing. Um, the next thing was in seventy-eight forty-one, that was what I just brought up about, um, lots of municipalities have grading permits along with the land clearing permit. So, if we wanna move forward with this ordinance, if we also wanna include the grading ordinance with it. So, lots of times they're like, before you even apply for a land clearing ordinance, you also have to get a land clearing permit. You have to also apply for a grading permit, so both of those come together, which is what Ma was talking about, how some of the issues that we have could be mentioned in grading and less so in like tree size and tree type, if that makes sense.
So, we can still write them as separate ordinances, but we're asking, is it appropriate to reference that?
Well, yeah, I have a big problem, yeah.
I, I do have a question, um, and some comments on this section, section forty-eight or seventy-eight dash four one. Um, specifically in part C, uh, and then A. Uh, A, shouldn't that be one? I, I'm channeling Ray here, I introduce that level of detail. But the, the thing that I really struggle with is, how do you operationally define, uh, substantially affect or reduce things like wildlife habitat or movement? Um, and you could argue if you take out a half acre of woodland, of course, it's gonna affect whatever that is there.
Right.
And, and this becomes, I think, the headaches that y'all would have to deal with in the planning department of argumentation related to, you know, someone's gonna say, well, you removed it. I can still see through all the trees, because you removed the one tree at your house and that removed screening. I mean, that, these things should have some sort of measurability.
Well, I think you're right, we'll, we'll try to focus more on dimensional standards and measurable effects and we'll try to vet this through some of the things that could, could be perceived as subjective.
Okay.
So, that's good for us, no, I really appreciate that.
Uh, my next question was on seventy-eight forty-four. Again, if you have any comments about the other sections, let me know, but my next question on seventy-eight forty-four is, they have a, um, East Lansing has a civil penalty of ten dollars per square yard of all area that's cleared without the permit. Obviously, that's subject to change, and just think about how much the commission would be willing or thinking of charging based up of what you guys know about Bath. Because obviously I don't live here, so I can't really speak to the demographic or price range of those that would be clear cutting on a commercial size.
I wonder where you got that, that.
Yeah, from East Lansing, so.
Well, we don't wanna turn this into East Lansing.
Right.
The question I have is, how, how many square yard, I, this is math, right? So, how many square yards are there in a half acre or something like that? I mean, is this a, a substantial fee or is this a nominal fee that no one would care?
I figured it out, I figured it out for, for an acre, one acre, that's forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, nevermind. So, twenty-four.
There is incentive there.
Real quick. That increases the price of the land quite a bit.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to just develop a separate fee schedule that could be updated yearly? That's just referencing the generic fee schedule instead of, and putting a specific.
Yeah, it shouldn't be part of the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Because amending that.
Yeah, it becomes very complicated.
No, that'd be great, we could just put it on our regular fee schedule.
Correct, yeah.
It's a great idea.
It's less work for me, so. Um, the next thing was talking more about, um, same, same section, but in part A. This is talking more about conservation, so rather than only having a fee payment, this is up in the air if we wanna do this or not. It's also having like a tree regulation. So, you could be able to cut down, so let's say you owe thirty thousand dollars, but we'll take away ten thousand dollars of that if you plant such and such amount of trees as well. So, that's also an option. We don't have to do this.
No, I'm sorry, like, three inch tree per two hundred square feet?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's no teeth there.
That's ten, ten by twenty.
Okay.
And a three inch tree has what, maybe a ten percent chance of survival?
Sure.
I mean, maples, I've planted thousands of them. Depends on what, what tree it is, you know?
Yeah, the species, yeah.
Develop a tree at that time.
Box elder. About cottonwood.
Oh, boy, cotton.
No, but there's, there's a serious point there that I, I don't know if a three inch tree per two hundred square feet is really gonna be, uh, um, developer's gonna go for that immediately, right? And then not do any watering plan or anything like that. And it's gonna be a null, um, I, I, it's, it's not gonna be a, a, something that they're gonna.
A deterrent, you mean?
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we should even give that gate and the fence there, just, just do the fee schedule.
Okay.
It's easier to administrate, easier to enforce.
I mean, perhaps there could be, you know. I mean, perhaps there could be, you know, uh, a, or a plan that is approved by, you know.
To give you guys a final say.
The plan commission?
You know, something, I mean, it said they come back with a landscaping plan that is phenomenal. I mean, unlikely, but.
No, I think that's good. I think it's good to give them some kinda out and I guess that's what we're saying, wanting to do here. Cause if the whole purpose isn't, we're not trying to make, again, revenue here. We're trying to create a sustainable township. A place where people wanna live. So by giving them that out, but coming to you guys and saying, hey, I have forty eight thousand dollars. Like I would much prefer, so what do you think about this landscaping plan? Then you guys can determine.
They would have a, have to have a landscaping plan as part of the commercial development, right?
No, because they might not have come to you at that point.
Correct.
That was the, that was the point I brought up.
Yeah, we're trying to be proactive here and not reactive.
You know, I mean, like they, they might just clear, yeah.
Yeah, I get that. I mean, in theory, we would only know that they would have, this is for commercial use because they would lockstep coming to the commercial plan.
There's a, we'll think, I'll try to think about what you're saying though with that, cause I think there's other ways for us to identify. Like is the land owned by a individual resident or a trust, or is it owned by an LLC or a C corp?
And I could do much more research on that. I can go ahead and look through some of the ordinance.
We'll try to mitigate that question. It's a fair question. We'll see what we can come up with.
So the feeling is you wanna give them some gate in the fence other than paying the full fee.
Yeah, but some gate, yes, but some gate in the fence that addresses the original issue at question here, which is the.
So subject to negotiation is what, well, everything in life is negotiable.
Yeah, I think, I think that subject to negotiation is key. I mean, with you guys, you guys get to determine. Which I like that better than us, I guess, trying to do this because again, we're not experts and it, not all land is created equal too. Like the land might be particularly wet and this metric might not make any sense. Just like with development, a lot of this that was built in over the last year or two, we've built in where the planning commission has had more authority. Because every, every development, every piece of property is different.
Yep, it is. Thanks for coming, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Hope we have a great evening.
So with that said, I, I mean, I, I do think there's a good point there based on the topography and, and the land within Bath. I mean, there are lots of swamp lands and lots of land that don't have, uh, high, um, valued trees. And I brought up box elders because there's a boat ton of, ton of them in the northern part of our township. Probably the southern part. I mean, what if it, someone does clear cut, uh, a whole bunch, you know, an acre of garbage trees?
See, I don't wanna, I guess my preference is not to get into that.
To that level?
Because then, yeah, we're getting too crazy.
Well, I get, and I think, uh, the intent here is to preserve green space. Garbage trees quote unquote still mitigate CO2 in the atmosphere.
Well, to an extent, yeah.
So that's, that's what we're trying to do. I, I think. That's my opinion.
So we need a tree sensitivity policy.
But, but if they clear cut that and, you know, they get, uh, cited with some fee and then the out is they come in with a better landscaping plan with more desirable trees, that's a good out.
Yep.
It's a good out for them. It's a good out for us. You guys get the final say.
Well, and we don't know, you know, in Afghanistan, they may covet box elder trees.
We don't know.
We don't stop and think about that. I haven't thought about it, but I will. Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this. This is, this is a big one.
These penalties wouldn't be in, would be applied if somebody clear cut something with no plan to do anything with the land. I mean, if they clear cut something today without authorization. And then three months later, they submitted a plan for what they're gonna do to this land, there still needs to be a penalty, but it wouldn't be as much.
Right.
So, you know, I, I like, what, what I'm really trying to do is make it so people are not gonna clear cut land, period. Until they come to the township to say, I wanna clear cut this and this is why, this is what I plan to do. That's it.
I'll go ahead and do some.
And I don't care what the zoning is, but what the, what the, uh, land use might be, whether it's residential or commercial. Because usually nobody's gonna clear cut one parcel.
No, no, that would be very unusual, Ray.
Yeah, they're gonna clear, they're gonna clear cut five or ten acres.
Right, correct.
And they may even hire somebody to come in and salvage the lumber.
And that's, that's what we don't want them to do.
Well, some of us do own woodlots and we periodically log, yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
They're not gonna spend that much money without a plan. I mean, to expend the money to clear cut and then not do anything with it?
Over by Clark Corners. Over by Clark Corners, I think.
Yeah, that's a, I was, the only scenario where I could see that happening, and it has happened a little bit in this area, is where the plan goes awry. So there was a plan, they did expend money, but recession, in the case of that property.
I don't know what their plan was on that. We have farmers who clear cut land, I mean, they do have a plan, but.
Obviously they'll be exempt off of the ag, so I don't wanna get too much into farming to freak everyone out about farming. Okay, well, you guys have given us a lot to think about. We've gotten, uh, some of our questions answered. We'll take, we'll take this feedback and we'll try to book what other municipalities are doing to address this. And we'll try to keep it in its simplest form, cause that's the big thing for us.
In section seventy eight forty three, double site survey, just one thing, it says here, wetlands may be pleasant based on the township, whether the city's wetland inventory map, we don't, we don't have a township inventory map, so that, anyway, so.
Be a good call. That's just.
Tweet, tweet that something.
Trying to.
It's on our work list. What's that? It's on our work list, right?
The wetlands.
The wetlands, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but we, we gotta tweet that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Does that help you out, Alexa?
Yes.
Hopefully see back in a few weeks. Maybe a couple of weeks, more than that, I guess.
I will definitely do some research. Those are things I wasn't even thinking about, so.
Good. Yep, and you're gonna be with us till the end of summer, is that correct? Good. Hopefully we can get this wrapped up.
Yeah, and then since I have the feedback too, I can go ahead and start working on that grading ordinance and piecing some of the stuff that you guys talked about too.
Good, great. Well, you're welcome to come any evenings if you want more feedback. We'll be glad to talk. Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, we're down to the wire here. We're gonna have an election of officers, some new faces to take over the, uh, commission, I presume. So, uh, I'll entertain a nomination for a chairman.
Move to nominate, uh, or elect, I.
No, we'll nominate. We'll have to vote, sir.
Yeah, nominate. Fine, nominate, Jesus. Nominate, uh, John Reich as chair.
At second?
Thank you. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we wanna roll call or, I don't really think.
I don't think it's necessary.
Are there any names?
Huh?
Are there any names?
No, I guess not. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
You accept that.
I'll accept, yeah.
I should ask you that?
Yeah, we have a pretty casual meeting.
That's true.
So we need a nomination for vice chairman.
Vice chairman.
I nominate Ray.
Yeah, does Ray, you wanna continue in your, uh, difficult position here?
Sure, it's been really hard, you know, so far.
I'll support, I'll support that.
I think I can handle it.
I'll support your nomination.
Thank you.
You got that. Sir, a second? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
He, he, he made the motion.
I made the motion. Oh, you made the motion. He seconded it. Sorry, I got it out of order completely. Uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I guess we got that off our plate. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That was really quick. Miles, do you have any report for us, sir?
I got one. I'll be fast, cause I know it's been a long night. You've talked about a lot. So since my time here at the planning department and with the help of the chair too, I, I put together kind of an in-year report for how the year went and how everything went, uh, ended up, a couple of metrics. And we're trying to track this year over year to see how things go. One of the big ones for us inside the department is, uh, zoning permits themselves, what does that look like? So we had, uh, just over a hundred and ten the first year I was here. And then, uh, we went down a little bit, um, you know, one oh five or one oh four. And then we ended up at one nineteen this year. So those are all pretty close together. What that means is to me is it's been high volume years. We've had a lot of commercial activity, a lot of residential activity, but it's steady growth, I think. And I think that's the big takeaway for me. Um, I am interested to see what twenty twenty four brings us. Kind of the anticipation is that things are gonna slow down a little bit. Um, however, we're a high demand area, so I don't know on the local scale what that's gonna look like. So that's what's kinda fun about following this data point. Um, it's a, it's a good one to follow and it's something we have control over the data. So it's very accurate for us. Um, here's the workload, um, of what was accomplished this year. Uh, I've fine tuned this by putting in green in the earlier ones. You guys saw what was actually taken off. Um, the work plan by getting accomplished or completed or approved. So, um, yeah, we kinda looked at that earlier. It's a little map we like to put together of all the SUPs issues, SUP amendments and site plan amendments that were issued. Uh, the special use permits are currently under review, which is the townhomes that you guys had. Um, we're still awaiting a full set of plans to come in for those, by the way. But kind of a flurry of activity, uh, again, a lot of it was taking place on the Saginaw Corridor. We have had a little bit more interest on the Webster Road Corridor last year than we did in twenty twenty two. So that was interesting. Um, had that one coffee shop, the home-based business that we did, uh, up in Northern Bath. That was an interesting one. I think you all remember the home-based business one then coming through. And then, uh, Josh Tyler Warehouse out there on Peacock Road, uh, local landscaping business that's starting up here in Bath. And so we're all very excited about that. That project is moving forward and so I, I thought that was a cool one. Um, it's nice to work with kind of a local business person instead of some kind of corporate entity. These were some of the maps that we created this, uh, last year. Just so you guys know, you know, we're using that GIS, uh, license that the township holds. Most of this was created in efforts to support the Parks and Recreation Plan that was, uh, just adopted. And then, um, the non-motorized plan, which is currently under review. Uh, they, we did all the raw mapping for them and then gave it to their GIS person. They kinda cleaned up. And that's what helped keep our price point low for that contract, was we took on all the GIS responsibilities of those plans. Again, these are the ordinances that were, uh, done last year. So quite a bit, I, we got four ordinances through and we got, uh, four more that currently through the, that were in process at some point working on. How that compares to the year prior is I think we were down, um, a couple of ordinances. I think we probably did seven or eight the year prior. However, some of those ordinances that we did the year prior was much simpler. So we've, now we've, the first year I got here, we immediately got a lot of the low hanging fruit out of the way. Um, now we're moving more into, as we talked about tonight, a more complex topic. Um, so they're taking a little bit longer. So it's not exactly a one-to-one comparisons with the ordinances, the same way it is with the zoning permits. But, um, I think we're doing good work and I think we're making a lot of progress. Major planning documents, uh, the only one we got going right now this, in twenty twenty three is the non-motorized plan. That'll get adopted, uh, in twenty four, which will be nice. And, uh, in twenty four, we'll be starting up, uh, the data efforts for the next update of the comprehensive plan. So looking forward to that. And then we just talked about some of our goals on this last slide of the department, uh, the planning division, the planning commission. Um, so I won't read through them all, but, uh, kinda the high level things we got going on is seeing the build out of the Webster Road Corridor is gonna take up a lot of our time this year. Um, seeing the planning for the Chandler Corridor is gonna take up a lot of time. This is work we'll be doing with the road commissions and our partnering agencies, but will always make its way up to the planning commission level. We obviously have our ad hoc committee, which will be helping us, uh, with some of the improvements on Chandler. But most of the stuff on Webster is already laid out and set in stone and is moving forward. So we are meeting with the road commission, just so everyone knows, here soon to go over the plan for twenty twenty four. How that's gonna affect traffic, what their, um.
You're talking Webster Road?
Webster Road. What their plan is. Uh, obviously we're, we wanna know because we know we're gonna get phone calls. As I get more information, I'll share that with you guys in the forums of either a communication or planning report. So you can spread it out to all your people as well.
Thank you.
When, when are you gonna meet with it? On the traffic, I'd be very interested in that meeting, talking about traffic control stuff.
Yeah, I think next Tuesday, but I don't know if we're gonna get, I don't know if they have a fully fleshed out plan yet. So next Tuesday, we're gonna go over a broad overview of everything that the road commission has slated for twenty twenty four. Um, and then we'll probably have monthly meetings as we move forward here. When we get to the point where they have a traffic control plan, yeah, I can obviously let you know. So yeah, that's it.
Jason.
I just wanna comment that this is a, um, beautiful, well thought out, uh, reports. Uh, it's light years ahead of where we were back in two thousand fifteen, when I first started, Ray.
Yep.
Long before you started.
There you go, there you go, where I started to take through.
Months later. Um, no, this is, this is incredibly helpful. I love the visuals. Uh, I mean, this is really a point of pride for the township. So really appreciate your leadership in this and the hard work of you and the staff in the planning department.
Yeah.
For sure.
Excellent job.
Absolutely.
There's one, one, I'll call it, I think this is really good too. Something that really bugs me, not about what we're doing here, but, is like Midwest Power and Ace Hardware, they now are open in Haslett.
I went over there. That's nice.
Is that what they said? No?
Well, their address is Haslett and one of the early adverts, we're gonna be opening in, in Haslett. I'm thinking somehow we've gotta get, you know, placemaking stuff or something, so that people know this is in Bath. The address, the address may be Haslett, but it's not in Haslett.
You know, Ray, you know, I'm, it's called the buzzword in planning is wayfinding. I'm all about it. I wanna sign on Saginaw so bad. I want, and on Marsh, I want the Welcome to Bath Township just opposed to the Meridian one.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm all, I'm all about it, but that's something I need to help trying to get by him from the board.
We need one on Chandler Road too, right across from East Lansing.
Helping with that. Yeah, let's, uh, emphasize that. Miles, so that does bring in a, a good point that may be something that we should consider and the board has looked at. Our signage throughout the township for our, uh, parks and other facilities are terrible. They're, it's, 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 they're all spray painted with stencils on two by sixes.
I've been talking about it since I got here.
And, and there had been traction on the board to support moving from that. And, and I don't know what it would take, perhaps it would take a recommendation from us to the board saying, do something at this point. Kate?
Yeah, we were looking for a house. We wanted Bath Township, but trying to, yeah, find the maps and make sure we were in the right place.
Well, yeah, but this is not really unusual, guys. There's five houses on Clark Road how east of Upton that are in the East Lansing mailing address.
Oh, that's typical everywhere.
Yeah, so it's not unusual.
But just because the mailing address is that, doesn't mean they aren't in Bath.
Well, I understand that, Ray, but the perception that the property owner, the business owner has when his address is a Haslett mailing, that he's in Haslett. MSU FCU has the same issue.
I, I will share they are in the Haslett School District, which is how many people identify the community that they belong to.
But if we had better signage and people identified as being Bath residents, even though they lived in, and sent their kids to, to Haslett schools, maybe we'd have better representation and participation in our planning activities, like the comprehensive planning.
And that's, that, I think that's true. I, I can't like get away from this because I think that, I think that is true. And we see it a lot, especially, I know Brenda is about to lose her mind here during election season. Because what's gonna happen is all these people that live in that neighborhood behind McDonald's, they're gonna wanna go to vote. And they're gonna drive to Meridian Township's township hall.
Some of them.
And then Meridian Township is gonna tell them, you need to go to Bath Township's township hall. And it's just, there's so many issues and spinoff benefits that can come from good wayfinding.
Yep, I agree.
It's like the Timber Ridge Golf Course. It's in Bath Township and all those homes are in Haslett School District, around them.
And a lot of them have an East Lansing mailing address.
East Lansing.
It's just, it's. But you know, to your point about the, the parks, I remember almost a decade ago, the planning commission got on this and they got on the board about this and the money was approved to order those cast bronze signs like the state uses for the parks in Bath and nothing happened.
Nothing ever happened.
Because the administration never followed up on it and nobody ever made them accountable.
Our shameful board members.
There are, there are two signs in the township. There are, there are two signs in the township, five more signs that I think need to be taken down. I've said this before, I thought they were taking it out one time. Those are the two signs on Clark Road that say Downtown Bath.
Yeah.
DDA or Downtown Bath?
It says DDA District.
Says DDA District, I think.
There's little signs at DDA, but there isn't.
I think that, I.
There is one.
Double check, I think it's two downtown signs.
Yeah.
Well, I think it is, yeah, I, yeah, I think you're right, yes, there is.
And, you know, we don't know that's not downtown, but somebody looking at Bath and they see, well, let's go see what Downtown Bath looks like. There's a sign.
I think it should say.
Where's it at?
I think it should say Bath Village, probably.
It's not even a village.
Yeah, but if you wanna political fight.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I.
It used to, it used to be.
We have a strong and prideful heritage in this community.
Yep.
It, it aggravates me when I drive down Chandler Road and I see that big sign that says, welcome to East Lansing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know that that's true, that is part of East Lansing.
On that side of the road only.
That side of the road only, yes.
It's too close, though. We should move it.
That's so funny because my first week here, Miles took me around like the township to introduce me. And then I found out I had been living in Bath for two years of my college experience.
Oh, right.
So I was like, no, but I'm in East Lansing, and I was like, you've been in Bath the whole time.
Well, I think if you go further south on Chandler Road, then it comes back to Bath Township on both sides of the road.
Yeah, correct, that is correct, yes. And one side used to be DeWitt.
Chandler is particularly hard to sign because it's a mess.
Well, it's that pesky four-twenty-five is what it is.
And it's a series of four-twenty-fives.
Yep.
But we could still sign it irrespective of what.
Yeah, well, and that's, it's a game that municipalities play with each other. And East Lansing and Meridian are playing the game. We're the only ones not.
Exactly.
Even DeWitt Township is, right?
Oh, a hundred percent. Yeah, again.
District and.
Yeah.
So we're, we're boxed in, other than Woodwall, they're not playing the game, there's only five thousand of them. But there's not five thousand in Bath, I mean, Bath is a community of thirteen, fourteen thousand people with a thriving commercial corridor that the township, in my view, is receiving no, uh, recognition for. All the hard work that you're putting in, people are like, man, Meridian Township's really doing great these days.
Yep.
That's the general consensus.
Or Haslett.
Yeah.
Haslett, yep.
That's true.
So that's, I guess that's why you're kinda hitting a, a soft spot for me sometimes.
You know, just as a segue to signage and everything, I, uh, for, um, Friends of Park Lake, I did some research on where to get signs. And there's a, a sign, I noticed the signs up north, I don't, you guys have probably all seen them, that are kind of sandblasted signs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a, a little company in Boyne City that makes those signs for every, everyone up there. So I'm in contact with him if, if that ever comes to be. Those are, those signs are just beautiful and you see them all over from, you know, from, from the Mackinac all the way down to Manstein.
Several places do that.
Yeah. They, they mark their parks with those signs and everything too.
We could probably find a local guy, Kate.
Yeah, there's a lot of people around.
I mean, that type of sign, I think, is really beautiful.
Laser engravers that do that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Candies Wildwood.
I will say this came up in the Bath School Museum discussion lately. Um, also interested in having a sign right off the highway to direct people to the museum. And there was this discussion, well, there used to be a big thing where you could put your little signs on. Well, it's still there, no, it's not, half the group didn't even know if it was there or not anymore, which I don't think is a good, um. Yeah.
Sign.
It is still there.
Well.
Is that what you're talking about?
The, the one that's kind of similar to what they have over on, like Clark and Watson Road, where different community groups can add their little logo emblem thing to it, there used to be one on Webster Road.
Have theirs.
And there was a lot of debate.
Not one on Webster.
There used to be one on Webster and there was a lot of debate as to whether it even was still there or not by people who drive through there every single day.
Yeah.
So I think that maybe some focus towards signing.
Well, that's one problem with signing particularly, and this is particularly, uh, apparent on the Park Lake Corridor and then leading into South Webster's, is that area is almost oversigned. You get to the point where it all becomes a blur because there's so much signage, you don't even notice what's going on.
We have a problem with that, with the roads.
Yeah, we, people just ignore signs. When I drive down Park Lake, especially now, and I understand the reasoning behind it, but now you have all of the, the lawn signs, the road signs, the beaches coming up, I don't see anything when I drive down there, just ignore it all.
But don't we have a sign ordinance that has limitations on how long you keep a lawn sign up?
We do have a temporary sign.
Maybe we should enforce that.
I didn't put them out.
And in addition to Arzo, the road commission also has one, um, and we've, we've talked about that. We're kind of getting into the, just side note for signage, we're getting into like the Super Bowl season for planning and signing. Is this election year or no?
Yes, it is.
It's about to be insane for signs, so we probably will be driving the township evaluating temporary signs, unfortunately, quite a bit. Getting verbal scuffles with people on the streets.
Can I, can I ask this, a question then about that, a segue? But pertaining to those temporary signs that say, uh, slow down, enjoy the view. Um, Friends of Park Lake did purchase those and I'm president of Friends of Park Lake.
Conflict of interest.
Well, what I'm asking is, um, for the possibility of a permanent sign, like some places have those.
Yeah.
What would be the process? Do we come to, to the planning commission or I mean to, uh?
Yeah, yeah.
And apply for a permit?
Yep.
Yep.
And if you're gonna put it in the road right away, you gotta get authorization from the county.
From the county, yeah.
Put it outside and they don't.
Also.
It's in the roadway, the county's gonna approve it.
Yeah, that, that's something in the future, so we're working on that Park Lake Corridor.
Just know that the planning ideology or, you know, even the, the traffic planner ideology behind that is you guys might be over, and I think we talked about this in the past, but you guys might be over signing to the point where you're fighting against your own cause.
I totally agree, I, uh, I wasn't for putting all those signs out.
So Miles, on a serious note, when it comes to signage and placemaking, uh, within Bath, I mean, what is the appropriate planning tool or process?
Yeah, I think that somebody already said it, but I think like if we were talking about a next step, I mean, it's okay, taking notes is something you can bring back to the board. But doing some kind of like resolution or, uh, document, um, that we're able to give up to the board that comes from you guys. Yeah, I think that's been helpful in the past and I think the board has taken some of that into account. I know the, the resolution that we sent out for the recommendations behind how to spend the artwork ones, some of that was taken into account when they made their decisions.
So instead of going to a board meeting, recommend a, form a committee for signage, it might be better for us to.
I think you just make a formal recommendation, I, I don't think there's any harm in also going to the board meetings and saying your piece as a member of the public.
Yeah.
But a formal recommendation with unanimous buy-in from the planning commission submitted to the board, to me, holds more weight.
And what would that statement be like?
Contail.
Well, uh, when we talk about the work plan, uh, again, like next meetings, cause I wanna get as much work as we're gonna do quantified on the work plan. Uh, that should be something that we could put on, we'll draft up like what we think, we bring it back to this body as a draft. You guys can amend it however you think, add to it, take away from it, um, edit it, and then we'll go from there and then send it up. But it'd be like a recommendation for better wayfinding throughout the township. And here are some examples of what we think would improve the township sense. The real thing that we're trying to get behind here is enhancing the sense of community in Bath.
Can we make that, can we make that happen now or?
Well, that, I think that should be part of the planning commission's purview, yeah.
The signs should be consistent, I would think in terms of.
Solar, electronic. Five thousand.
For him to start the work on it, is what I'm saying.
Well, then we'd have to decide what locations were appropriate, I mean, you can't pull one on every street.
For him to put it on the workload sheet is what I'm asking.
Yeah, we can do that.
Let's address it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Eight-twenty, so.
Okay, yeah, it's eight-twenty, do you, uh, that, so we're still on planning commission, our planner report, so.
Yeah, yeah, we still are.
I don't know if we have a, I'm, I'm all good, so.
Is that good, is that okay? But can you bring something to the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda, Miles?
Will do.
Put it on your list.
I drafted the last letter that went to the board, as long as you guys like the format of that, I can draft another one.
You did an excellent job with that, Alexa. Yeah, if you wanna do something like that, bring it to us for the next meeting, that would be great.
It seems that we have places in the master, current master plan that addresses this.
Yeah, we'll try to use the language of the master plan as always.
Thank you. Okay, Kate, you have a report for us?
Yeah, I believe the Board of Trustees has had three meetings since the last time you met, so I will give the highlights. Um, from the December eighteenth meeting, Dwight Washington gave the county report and he shared that the, there was been very good reception regarding the Norm Fasteners Project coming to Bath Township at the county level. Um, he had heard, uh, good, good things about that and very positive feedback. Um, he also mentioned the solar and wind policy review and what's going on at the county level, what's going on at state level and kind of shared all the frustrations about this process. Um, it's, it's been a topic of multiple meetings, it sounds like, it's on the cover of the magazine that was just in my mailbox today. Um, he talked about some opioid settlements at state level and there's some discussion of how that money should be spent. Um, robbing grants in terms of the, the broadband going on at the county level. And he shared that at Moats Park in St. John's, they're starting, um, some family night hikes um, as a fundraiser event. Um, and I believe there's a stargazing element of that where there's some information shared. Um, we had committee appointments, which is how I ended up here. We also had, um, presentation of the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan, which it's, I thought it's really nice that a lot of the topics in those plans overlap with the topics that we're talking about here. There was a lot of, um, discussion about signage, that's one of, I think, was their number, one of their number one priorities in the Parks and Recreation Plan, so we're, it seems not the only ones having this discussion and having that as an agenda item. Um, and I think that they see that as something that's an easy one to get going and check off the list. Financially as well as, um, you kind of get your return on your investment there. Um, crosswalks as well was another, um, item that was mentioned in their plan as well as a whole bunch of other things dealing with our Parks and Recreation System. Um, then we met, we had a special meeting right after Christmas to discuss purchase of fire trucks. Our current vehicles are about twenty years old and so the fire chief had brought a proposal for, for purchasing some fire trucks, we did not take any action on that, we're coming back to that in a few months. That's got sent to the newly formed finance committee. And we just met Tuesday last week and approved the Parks and Recreation Plan. It was actually a really short meeting, um, from the meetings that I've been to so far anyway. Um, most of our time honestly was spent discussing the, um, planning commission priorities for two thousand twenty-four. That was what I think the bulk of the time was spent talking about, which are these same topics of the wind, solar, battery and whatnot that Jack spoke to earlier this evening. Um, degrading and runoff, this, the, um, I don't know what I was gonna say there, what developments we wanna see within the township. Um, some family recreation opportunities were mentioned. Um, Mr. Phillips also mentioned, um, perhaps considering an ice rink as a idea. Just kind of an off-the-cuff suggestion of a facility he knows, he believes that is in high demand in our area. Um, ORV ordinances were mentioned. Um, and I think that's it, but yeah, the, I think that the topics were received pretty favorably. There were a lot of, um, interest in dealing with the four, four topics that Miles shared with us.
Any questions for Kate? Here and there. Let's take commissioner comments. Mr. Severy, would you like to start?
Well, it's time for our Norm Fasteners. One concern I've got, I think we need to be thinking about, is what kind of development do we wanna put along Webster Road between Norm Fasteners and Webster Road? To make that, you kind of hide their big building, but be attractive and stuff there. There's enough room, I've talked to Miles, but we've got over three hundred feet.
Yeah, there is.
Big amount of land between Webster Road and, and their property.
Yep.
A lot of land to develop, we, what kind of development, what do we want it to look like? First to think about.
George.
Can I comment on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, the, I think, uh, the property owner and from what he said, uh, Jeff was, they were in discussion about working out some of them details. So that insight might be gotten from them.
But they don't own that property, Mr. Kessler does.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, him and Mr. Kessler.
Oh, yeah, well.
Sir, are you saying look like in terms of what kind of amenities or how it looks in terms of form basically?
Are you gonna put a McDonald's there?
Physical appearance?
Yeah, I think, as you drive down through that road, what we want that to look like, it, you know, not, not just landscaping, but the building types and stuff like that.
Well, I think we also gotta consider what will the community support?
Well, that's true, yeah. Yeah, we don't wanna put a building up that goes vacant.
Right.
Okay. Jason's self-storage facilities. No more self, um.
Did you have anything else, Ray?
No.
Oh, Jason, would you like?
No, thank you, I really appreciate these meetings, I thought we had a great discussion here, so.
Thank you.
Again, even though we didn't hear your presence, presentation, I think you got her gist. Sorry, Matt, not letting you get through it.
Thank you.
I, I echo that comment.
Thank you.
And also, uh, per usual, I think those, those people that work behind the, the facade, so to speak, every day and prepare all this material and do the legwork, uh, day and day, I know it's your job, but I appreciate it very much. And, um, I appreciate the comment from Miles about that fine line with the ordinances and, and, uh, that we really didn't want to eat another, um, clear space, like as much as I'm against you telling me what to do, I really hate to see like that eye development. And I, I'm not trying to pick on them, cause things happen and I know they're, they've developed a lot of wonderful things. But it is, I hear a, from a lot of people about that development, what's going there, why is it this way? Yada, yada, and, and I can't answer to that. Yeah, so thank all those that work every day here.
Thank you, George. Kate, did you have anything else you want to say?
Um, no, this has been very informative for me this evening, uh, listening to Miles's timeline of how he got here. I think you're much older than I assumed you were. But other than that, I'm, I'm looking forward to learning a lot through this process.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Cockney?
Learn every meeting, I, uh, totally appreciate every meeting, this was a very good one. Um, a lot of people would be bored stiff with this stuff, but to me, it's absolutely fascinating.
Yeah, I think it's fascinating.
Um, one of the things I would like to say i- is that we talk about, kind of nebulously about the, the Webster Road Corridor. Um, Mr. Kessler owns all of that lot, that land directly in front of Norm Fasteners, all the way down to in front of, of, uh, Food Court, in front of the, uh, the Greater Lansing Food Bank. I think, um, as the planning commission should plan, I think we should have Mr. Kessler in here and just pick his brain to see what kind of thoughts he has on what he thinks could go in there. Because I know he deliberately did not sell the entire parcel to that development company and there was a reason for that. And so I wanna.
He hasn't even closed the deal on that yet.
I know.
Last time I got to.
I would like to, uh, if he doesn't mind, you know, I would like to have him, uh, talk to us about it. Pretty, pretty much ultimately, he's got his, he's got his thumb on what's gonna happen there.
He does, but I don't think at this point in time, he's willing to make it public.
Yeah, you can, we can ask him.
For various reasons.
Probably, you know, you have a rapport with him, maybe you could ask him.
Yeah, I have, we've talked about it. He does serve on the ZBA.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, no longer.
Oh, was he?
He didn't re-up.
Oh, he did not, okay. Last one I attended, he was there, so. But yeah, if you could ask him, you know, if he'd come in and talk to us about it, that would make our job. A lot, I wouldn't say easier, but it would make us more informed.
Or even in small groups, maybe.
Excuse me?
Maybe even in small groups, cause maybe you don't want it on a public fo- format.
That's a good point, too. You know, if, if, if he was willing to talk, but doesn't wanna talk on the record, I mean, that's, that's another thing.
I could talk with Kami about it again.
Yeah, but I, but I mean, you know, all of us are out there and we talk to developers, we talk to, uh, commercial property, uh, sellers. You know, somebody says, hey, what do you think about putting a Applebee's out there or something, you know? Well, well, I don't know.
The, the issue at this point is, is there a market for certain businesses that would make it sustainable to develop?
Correct. And that's something, I mean, we don't know.
So he doesn't wanna build something that's gonna be vacant.
We don't even know what we don't know about what.
Thankfully, he wants to go around up there. We don't.
So that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say, but I think that's very germane to the future of our existence here. Is that right there, you know, that is the Webster Road Corridor.
Oh, yes, I think that if, if there's gonna be any development, it's gonna be there, it's in, in this area.
Yeah, exactly, so, uh, you know.
Oh, I totally agree.
I would, I would like to.
Once those apartments start digging, you'll see more development because people will, again, the population base will be there.
Oh, one, one thing I also wanted to say, if you don't mind. Miles, that development, that, if you recall, the one on the end of Coleman Road, Coleman and Marsh, you know, that was to go on that real, in front of the church. I just saw new for sale signs on all of that land. I mean, literally on, it's out on the, out on the highway entrance, exit ramp, there's one there for the, you know, the extreme eastern part of it, and then there's one right on Marsh Road, right there off from the highway. So apparently that deal didn't go through. Cause it's up for sale again.
Interesting. I know I began to, I've been joking with Lexi, I've been getting the Trader Joe's updates for my wife daily.
That thing is so small. I was surprised.
None of them are big.
I hear a wall is going up, so.
What's a, what's a small building across the street from that?
From the Trader.
Well, that's a bank, a credit union, I believe.
Reaching in across, just to the.
A forward, a forward out article that Ryan sent me, it was good. It was five, five developments to watch out for in Meridian Township and it.
In Meridian Township. Well, you know, you hear that. What if, you know, if Mr. Kessler is receptive to that on that land that he owns, what if we go and say, hey, well, what do you think about building that over here instead of in Meridian Township? Do, do a little marketing, you know, get a little.
They're already down that road.
What do you guys think about that?
Someone's gotta do it.
Can't hurt to ask.
That's all, gentlemen. I have a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Thank you, gentlemen. Concessance vote. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone object?
No.
Thank you.
We're done. Thank you very much.
John, thank you for a well-run meeting. I really.